Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February, or excuse me, March 17, 2016, Budget Forum on the FY 2017 Budget. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
What we'll do tonight, we're going to start with the Town Manager's Presentation, and after the presentation, we'll open up the floor for visitor questions, comments, suggestions, anything you want to offer. And we've got most of the divisions from the town in here, so we should be able to drill down on any certain subject matter with pretty good detail. Stephen, I'm going to move on over so they can see, okay?
All right, back on. Okay. Yeah, I only made about 15 printed copies. I wasn't sure if people were going to show up, and I hate killing trees unnecessarily. The presentation we posted on the website tomorrow, so if everybody wants to see it, sometime probably by tomorrow afternoon, they can download it. We'll get started. Well, good evening, and I'm pleased to present the FY 17 Select Board's Annual Town Budget. So, the Select Board's recommended FY 17 Budget by function for the budget funds overall is 62,317,591. As you can see from the pie chart, the public schools account for about 53% of the operational expenses. Then, the next largest bite is really tied between employee benefits and the Department of Public Works. From there, you have public safety, and then debt service, community services, planning community development, along with general government there at the top. And I say this every year, the importance of the pie illustration is significant in that the pie really is a fixed circle. There's a fixed amount of revenue that we can budget every year. And so, if we budget to the full extent of our levy capacity, which essentially we are this year, then that pie doesn't grow. It stays the same size. And then, the annual budgeting exercise is really how do you slice it, if you see these divisions? How do you move those lines to make all of it work? And this is something that the Select Board, along with the town departments, the department heads are here, if anybody has any specific questions later on, as well as CFO Paul Pesterzak spend, I mean countless hours on. On top of the brief presentation I'm giving you tonight, there will be, once the budget is finalized, there'll be a larger budget document that we shorthand refer to as the GFOA Budget, and GFOA stands for Government Finance Officers Association. And they have a set of budgeting best practices for municipalities nationwide. And if, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but it's a much larger document than in previous municipal budgets. Correct. And we have it in a kind of glossy-covered bound edition that'll be coming out sometime after town meeting, when the budget is, actually before town meeting. But the final document will be available to the public once everything's kind of nailed down. I'm pleased to say that the town of Long Meadow was, received the Budgeting Best Practices Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the FY 16 Budget, and it's a tremendous accomplishment. And I just want to acknowledge the work that went into that from departments, especially the Finance Department, Finance Director, as well as the Select Board. So, when we divide our spending into categories, you can see that we are, the largest share is salaries, and this is operating categories, all funds. So, this is town and schools. We are in the people business. Our raw materials for our work are people, and our means of delivering services are through people. So, it's not surprising that salary plus employee benefits are combined the greatest categories. Other expenses account for about 23% of the budget, and then debt service is about 8%. One of the things that I also say annually when I present the budget is, by and large, the municipal budget can be divided into two categories, things that are fixed and things that are flexible. Things that are fixed are things like employee benefits and insurance. To provide the coverages, or to receive the coverages that we get, it costs a certain amount of money that is assessed to us by others. And so, that's not negotiable or flexible. We must meet those obligations. Debt service is obviously money that we borrow to do projects. I mean, the building we're sitting in right now is probably the single largest component of our debt service that we have to pay, and that's fixed. That's, we owe a fixed amount of money to the bondholders. Within the expense line item, there are things that are fixed, and there are things that are flexible. Some things are mandatory trainings, or mandatory certifications, and things like that, that you must maintain. And then, there are other things that are flexible. And then, salaries, I don't know if it's the majority, but a large percentage of our salaries are fixed, if you will, by virtue of collective bargaining agreements, or other employment contracts. So, when you get down, when you drill down into the different functions, really, the vast majority of the budget is fixed. So, funds that are flexible, or to say it differently, discretionary, are the minority of the funds. So, to start with the general government, the Select Board recommended budget is $1.489 million. That's a reduction of almost $20,000 from FY 16. The reserve fund is carried in the general government function. And I don't know how familiar people are, the categories that I'm listing here are, the nomenclature comes from really the national standards for how you identify spending functions in the government. So, they're going to come across as general government, public safety, public works, planning, community development. Those are categories that are used all over the country. They're not terms of art that we employ here. So, there are a lot of functions lumped in under general government. One of those functions is the reserve fund. For all of you, I'm sure, Richard knows, but the reserve fund is an appropriation that the Finance Committee has control over. Because we can only get appropriations through town meeting, there are times where unexpected costs come up during the year. And so, the Finance Committee has an appropriation that can be applied for those unexpected costs throughout the year. That's carried under general government. In FY 16, funds were taken out of the police and fire line items for overtime and put into the reserve fund where, as we sit here today, those funds reside. We're proposing to move them back into the public safety category for FY 17. So, that's the big change there. There are also two new initiatives that the Select Board has approved in their budget. One is the Town Manager's Innovation Fund, which would basically be an internal grant fund for initiatives that department heads come up with, that we don't have the budget for, but they can demonstrate will either improve the quality of service at either the same, or slightly increased price, or lower costs through other types of savings or efficiencies that can be achieved. And then, there's an energy fund, which similarly is an internal, kind of like a granting fund, to capitalize energy efficiency programs that will yield savings in either reduction of consumption or increased use of renewable sources. Public safety. Public safety is the category that includes the police and fire department. As you can see, there's about a $90,000 increase in the police department. A big part of that is two vehicles are being purchased. And I have some more details in the police department down the line. So, two patrol vehicles are being purchased. And then, the fire department has about a $35,000 increase. Again, a lot of that is the overtime. $20,000 per department was moved out. So, $20,000 each department is coming back into those categories. So, for the fire department, you can see it's the 20,000, plus another, about 15,000 and change for some of the EMS operations. EMS is the ambulance. Planning community development, this is really largely our building department, and then our regulatory boards, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, they all get their funds for some of their administrative costs in this line item. This is, you know, this is a base level budget. Not a lot changes with the planning and community development budget each year. I think for $185,000, our departments and the regulatory bodies provide a really great level of service to the community, and I think it's one of the best values that we get out of our municipal government. And to give them credit, they actually lowered their budget about $5,000. So, the school department budget, this was discussed at length last night by the Select Board. We're recommending about $33 million for the schools. That's almost a million-dollar increase over the FY 16 budget. It's still $125,000 less than the school committee recommendation. The big component in driving the school budget increases is obviously free full-day kindergarten. And when you look at the budget, that is reflected on the revenue side, not the expenditure side, because it's the loss of the tuition that drops, you know, when we balance the budget, revenues and expenditures have to zero out. They have to be at the same level. And so, if this is the expenditure side, it doesn't really increase because of kindergarten, but the revenue drops down. And that's really what's made it really challenging to balance this budget. And in fact, last night, as the Select Board formulated the recommended budget that we're presenting here tonight, significant cuts to Select Board policies, including the funding of capital improvements and funding of other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, were reduced. And one of the goals, in fact, the budget directive that was sent out by me, the budget process annually is initiated by a budget directive sent out by the Town Manager. And I had directed departments to come in with an increase of no more than 2.25%, because I think if you've been watching the meetings, you've heard us talk at length about how we are within five years of reaching our maximum mill rate, our maximum tax levy rate, under proposition 2.5, which is $25 per thousand. We're at 24.33. And unless real estate prices go up significantly, which if you look back, the recent history has really shown no sign of a spike, or we experience significant new growth, we're going to hit the maximum amount we can levy, which means as costs go up, which they do annually, and I'll point you in the direction of the employee benefits and liability insurance, to show that those costs go up outside of the town's control. As those costs go up greater than 2.5% each year, we will be unable at that point to increase our levy. So, the net effect of that is, we are likely going to be paying the maximum tax rate and still having to reduce services. And this is something we're trying to plan ahead for, and that's one of the reasons why we did not want to use all of our levy capacity, because you can carry it over in future years. Unfortunately, the stresses on the budget, again, largely due to two factors, the reduction in revenue from kindergarten tuition proposed by the school committee, and a significant increase in our health insurance costs, really made that just about impossible to do this year. So, for the Department of Public Works, we have a recommended budget of about $3.5 million. That's a decrease in the general fund budget of about $67,000. Part of that is the reallocation of DPW time. Employees, this is the general fund, most of you probably know, the DPW also includes the water and sewer utilities. And the DPW employees, many of the DPW employees do during their workday, do work for general fund functions, like working on, filling potholes in the street, would be something that would be funded by the general fund. If they're repairing a water main, that is work that is funded by the Water Enterprise Fund, which you pay on your water and sewer bills. If they're repairing a sewer manhole, that would get paid for out of the sewer enterprise fund. But it's the same guys and the same equipment out there doing the work. So, they divide their time between the three sources, water, sewer, general fund. And the Audit Committee several years ago looked at the allocation and felt it needed to be studied and allocated more, instead of kind of on, you know, broad-based assumptions, based more on the specific time usage. So, this is the third year of a three-year allocation, so part of the number reflects that. The big reduction is really utility costs. Right now, we're fortunate to be in a very favorable pricing time for not only building utilities like natural gas and electricity, but also gas and oil and diesel fuel. We actually, in preparation for this budget, we were able to lock in our purchase price for FY 17 at a significant saving. So, we were able to reduce the DPW budget by that much. The unfortunate part is, we were not able to expand services in some areas that we've spent a lot of time exploring ways to do more, especially with the areas of field maintenance and facilities. But we were able to maintain what we're doing today through this budget proposal. Community services, this is largely parks and rec, the library, and the Council on Aging. And this is about $1.5 million. Again, this is about a $25,000 decrease. One of the reasons why we're able to decrease this spending category is the success that the Council on Aging has had in increasing their grant writing capabilities and their grant awards to fund functions that had been previously covered by the general fund, which is a great help in balancing this year's budget. So, they are, the Executive Director, Amy Sados, to be commended. The other thing is, the daycare expenditures have been reduced, and the daycare, which is at the direction of Director Barry Jarvis, has really had a good couple of years financially. I mean, it's really, it is a government agency, but we run it like a business, and it's done very well, especially over the last year. And so, we were able to reduce expenses and also increase some revenue to the general fund from the daycare. So, that's a very positive thing for FY 17. By and large, though, this is a base service level budget. There are no expansions of service built into this. Debt service, this is based on debt service schedules. There are things that, projects that are 10 or 15 years old that we're still paying debt service on. There's different, there's short-term debt, long-term debt. We have bond anticipation notes that we do for lower levels of borrowing. There's a whole mix of things, but the overall bottom line is, it's about $4 million of our budget, but a slight decrease in FY 17 from FY 16. So, employee benefits and liability slash property insurance, again, this is pension, health insurance for our employees, as well as insurance that we pay for unemployment and our property coverage. Almost a half a million dollar increase. The employee health insurance premiums are going up 12%. Quite honestly, that's largely due to one carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Many employees have health in England, and that was only a 5% increase. And then, we pay into the Hampton County Retirement Board, that's at HCRB, and that is the pension program for municipal, well, all municipal and county employees in Hampton County, of which we are a part, and our assessment went up about $60,000 So, the town does maintain some reserves or fund balances. For free cash, we have $500,000. And this is as of today, or beginning of March, really. We have the Operational Stabilization Fund, which is the town's rainy day fund. That's at about $2.7 million. Capital Stabilization Fund, which helps offset cost overages, or costs to plan capital projects, that has a balance of about $32,000. Water retained earnings is about, sorry, $32,000. Water chain earnings is about $200,000. Sewer retained earnings is about $373,000. Solid Waste Recycling, which is its own little enterprise fund, but largely subsidized by the general fund, has about $20,000 retained earnings. And then, our ambulance reserve, which is a reserve that gets collected from billing Medicare and private insurance for running the ambulance, has a balance of about $70,000. That fund does go to, that fund is used to pay for equipment related to, like new ambulances and other equipment that's needed to run the EMS services. Just a quick note on the available fund balances, when we do borrow money, one of the things that saves the town significant interest cost is our bond rating, which is a AA2, which is really quite high for a community that is really nearly 100% residential and nearly 100% built out. Our lack of new growth really is one of the things that hampers our ability to expand our tax base. The bond rating, though, which we just got recertified last year, really affirms that we are a financially well-managed community, but we still have budget stresses. They have, the bond rating agencies have certain benchmarks they want to see in terms of reserves. And usually, 10% of expenditures in a given year should be held in reserves. And the better reserves you have, the better bond rating you have, the lower your interest costs. So, this is something, this is an area, we are usually on the lower end of all those metrics. So, if it's 5% to 10% of reserves, we are, it fluctuates a little bit, but we're usually closer to the 5%. And that's something that we've identified as a long-term need, but difficult to achieve, given, like I said, the operational pressures and the lack of revenue growth. So, this is just a snapshot of where department budgets from an operating standpoint have gone. The one thing that's not included in these numbers is, we are carrying a separate article or separate line item for wages. The town is, the collective bargaining agreements from any of the town-side unions expire in June 30. And we're in the process of bargaining some of those agreements. And so, we have carried a $212,000 pot of money, if you will, to fund those, excuse me, fund those agreements in FY 17. But because they haven't been bargained, we haven't assigned them to the different spending categories. But just for base level operations, I just want to give you a snapshot of the work we've done to make sure we've delivered a budget that is providing a base level of, the same level of services we enjoy now at the most cost-effective way possible. And so, you can see general governance budget is down about 1.3%. Public safety's gone up 2.65%, and I have a slide on that next. Planning community development is down over 2.5%. As we documented, schools are up over 3. Public works, community service, debt service, those are all reductions over FY 16. And then, employee benefits and liability insurance, again, as we just talked about, is up over 6.25%. So, I just want to do two kind of snapshot slides, one for public safety, one for schools, because those, for operational budgets, those kind of jump off the page as being the big increases. So, for public safety, it's a 2.65% increase over FY 16. One of the reasons why that percentage looks so high is that in FY 16, no vehicles were budgeted. And we have a vehicle replacement plan that calls for at least one patrol vehicle to be replaced. Patrol vehicles have a life of about three years, 100 to 125,000 miles. After that, maintenance costs go up, reliability goes down, and really, the handling of the patrol vehicle itself really becomes of a lower quality. And for us, that's a safety issue for not only the public, but for our officers. So, it's important to make sure that we replace those vehicles on a schedule. And we kind of got off schedule last year because we budgeted zero. And so, that reduced the baseline number for FY 16. So, when we add the two vehicles back, plus the overtime, when you compare it to FY 16, it looks like a substantial jump. But it really is just getting ourselves back on track for vehicle replacement and overtime that had been in FY 15 and went down in 16 because it went to the reserve fund, and now it's back in. So, that's really the big driver for that 2.65% increase. And then, the school department, 3.09. It's an increase, like I said, of about $1 million. Originally, I had proposed a budget that increases schools by about $808,000. After a lot of discussion with the school department and the school committee, the Select Board agreed to increase the amount, the recommended amount for the school committee to $992,000. The budget approved by school committees, 1.1 million. So, that leaves us about $125,000 difference between what's being recommended here tonight and the school committee. Obviously, as I've discussed, the big driver there is the reduction in revenue for full-day kindergarten. The Select Board has talked about it at length throughout the budget process. And the thing I want to say is, administratively, the Chair of the Select Board, Richard Foster, the Chair of the School Committee, Janet Robinson, Superintendent Doyle, myself, the chair of the school committee, Janet Robinson, superintendent Doyle, myself, the finance director, Paul Pesterzak, and the assistant superintendent, Tom Mazza, have met throughout the budgeting process since October to make sure we understood where we were in terms of our budget pressures. I want to commend the schools for really keeping open lines of communication. I think the collaborative relationship we have, not only in the budget, but on many operational items, is, is one of the really great parts about working the community. We really do work very closely with our colleagues at the schools, but we're all under the same pressure. And as I mentioned at the outset, the pie is fixed. And as cost pressures go up, you know, more collaboration is needed and more compromise. The basic, after the select board's debate, it, it got to the point where any further reductions in the, if you will, town-side budget to meet the school committee's request was going to deduct, was going to result in one of two things or a combination of both, and that is a reduction in force, which means, reduction in operation or reduction in force, which means layoffs and/or cutting services, and reduction in meeting our capital needs as well as investing in the OPEB that I talked about, that is something that needs to be invested in annually because we have an unfunded liability that communities are now being, are under increased pressure to fund every year. So we kind of hit, hit bone with the budget, and that's why the select board approved, recommended a budget that asks the school committee to see if they can go through their budget and come up with $125,000 in savings so we can go to town meeting with a balanced budget that works for both sides. And I want to reiterate that the select board did significantly reduce spending on capital and investments in OPEB, two things that are contributions for which are determined by select board policy that has been adopted. And so if you, if you ask me, does this budget comply with select board policy or town policy? It does not. It's balanced as we have it presented, but it does not comply with the investments in critical areas that are, that are called, called for by policy. But, you know, I do think that a lot of great work has gone into this. I do look forward to hopefully continued dialogue with the school committee and the school department, and I think we will be able to present this to town meeting and assure them that the high quality of services that they have come to expect from the town will be maintained at the most cost-effective way possible.
Champ, there's one extra chair up here, and Stephen Winkle likes to take one chair there, too. Here's one extra chair, and then we've got an extra one here at the table, so.
I was going to unplug this. Does anybody have any questions about going back to slides, or is everybody? Look, as people are going to, probably going to sit here.
Some other people are coming in?
Well, as people, as people come up from the forum, they're going to sit here. So I can always plug it back in.
We can leave, Mr. President.
No, I'll, go back to my corner. I won't swing at the bell.
Thank you for the excellent presentation. I echo, there's been a lot of work that went into this budget. I think the audience, I'm sure, can appreciate when you look at all the, all the figures up there, the amount of effort that does go into balancing the budget each year. Does anybody have any questions for Stephen before we open up general comments? I mean, since he just gave his presentation?
Well.
Pardon?
I think.
Ernie, you got to come up. Yeah, I got to come up. They can't hear you on the TV.
Very brief.
We still.
The issue is, of course, there can be question about his presentation.
Yeah. Well, that's what we want, is if we got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Pesterzak. Special privileges. Well, you know, I wanted, I wanted to refer to the.
Yeah. You have to identify yourself.
Thank you. I'm Ernest Welker, 243 Burbank Road. Been on the audit committee for years, and so one of my, one of my long interests has been the fact that we aren't paying our way for the benefits that we're promising employees. And we're talking about tens of millions of dollars between the OPEB, which is other pension benefits, and the other refers to other retirement benefits other than pensions, and the pensions themselves. So we're, when, when we look at these numbers and we see debt numbers, those debt numbers understate things because the debt isn't called debt. It's called, you know, on account, pardon me, unfunded liabilities. It now appears in the financial statements, and every year we're finding out that the obligation, which now appears as a liability in our financial statements, is going up by $3 million or so. And it's going to go up that much almost every year because our obligations under, for example, OPEB are something in the area of $3 million something. And what do we pay generally, Paul?
Just over a million for retirements.
Just over a million. So it's going up a couple million a year, and that appears on the financial statements. And so far, it hasn't had a lot of effect on the town bond rating because a lot of towns are in this situation. But I just want to call that to everyone's attention, and we'll see that it's getting worse. The other thing that I wanted to, I don't want to, I don't want to, I have a lot of things I want to talk about, but I don't, I don't want to take the floor all this time. Just one other thing on this. In the very first, the very first, oh, pardon me, the spending categories, we see salaries of 56%, and then we see employee benefits and a liability payment of 13% of the total, which comes up to 69%. So of course, in those employee benefits, as I just said, it's understating it because we have bigger obligations. But even there, and it said these are fixed, the town manager referred to these as fixed costs. Well, they're only fixed because we negotiated them, you know? And as we get closer to that 25% absolute limit, I think the employees of the town have to begin to consider whether the town truly can, can, can afford any increases. I'm not talking about little ones, I'm talking about any, for at least a while. And in this, in this environment where prices aren't growing up fast, there's a possibility that, that could happen without it being too disruptive to the employees. The other component of that is the benefits cost. We just got, just saw here, the benefit cost went up a lot. Those are benefits that the town is paying for, and the benefits are going to the employees, and they're negotiated. So these aren't fixed. They're only fixed because the town negotiates with the unions and agrees to it. So those, I want to point that out as a matter of it not being true that they're fixed. Other components in here, I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to hog the floor on these kinds of things. I would like to ask the finance director about the, the benefit costs because the arrangements, Pioneer, what is it called, Pioneer Valley, what, no.
Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Program?
No.
Scantic Valley?
What?
Healthcare?
Yeah.
Scantic Valley Healthcare?
Scantic Valley Health, health thing. That is a terrific deal. I mean, the town, that, that, I was in that business for a while, and it, that is, that has been a great benefit to downtown, and the employees deserve a great credit because they are doing things to keep their costs down. That is by their taking advantage of various services, including exercise program, fitness centers, and what are some of the others?
There are a whole slew of things, and a wellness program, whether it's simple blood pressure clinic, all sorts of screenings that go on free of charge. Some of them are actually given incentives to have the screenings done so they can preempt any major illnesses.
That's terrific. I mean, that's a way to keep the, the budget down for those benefits, and they're good benefits. It's not like they're bad benefits. So, you know, kudos to all of those involved in that program, including the employees who are doing a good job of helping to keep the costs down. Debt service. Put aside the issue on OPEB and pensions. What are the, what are the major, the debts, the debt associated with major projects?
Obviously, this, the building that we're currently in is the biggest, and we still have some debt outstanding on the, the elementary schools that were recently done, that would be Wolf Swamp and Blueberry. We have some small amounts of debt outstanding.
Could I interrupt you?
Oh, yeah.
And ask, of the $4 million, roughly, how much is for the schools?
Probably 3.5 million.
3.5. So the other piece, the other piece is small.
Right.
A lot of small things, like sewers and things like that.
Sewers and drains, things of that nature, water.
And sewers, sewers would be picked up by the
Rate here.
Cost of, of the sewer rate and so forth.
Storm sewers, not sanitary sewers.
Pardon me?
Storm sewers aren't, aren't general revenue as opposed to, you know, where the rain goes, those outfalls. That's what Paul's talking about. The other, you know, flush your toilet sewers isn't in this budget. It's in a, well, it's in the budget, but it's, it's, that, that is separate. It's carried by the sewer enterprise fund.
That's not in the 3.987?
I believe.
Four, four million, you said three and a half is for, for the schools, under $500,000.
I believe that's all inclusive of water, sewer, and general fund, that figure.
Okay. I'm correct.
Right. So you were wrong.
I said I was correct.
Okay.
One demerit tonight. The night's young, though, right? Anything else?
I, I'll close my comments for now.
Okay.
I'll return the mic.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Richard, if I could, not, not, not as a response or rebuttal, but just for information. There's a lot of talk already this evening about OPEB, and I just want to let people know what the figures are, that last year we funded this other post-employee benefits fund for, which is essentially retiree medical funds, at $237,300, 237.3. It was our policy, based on our policy, it would have been funded at 367.3. So it would have gone from 237.3 to 367.3, but in order to balance this budget, it's only going up to 244.721. That is an increase of 3.1%, but it's not nearly getting to where we need to be to meet the requirements that our auditors and, and other advisors have indicated.
Mark, it's, it's worth noting that the unfunded liability for towns in the $30 million neighborhood.
Yeah. On OPEB. And Ernie also mentioned the, as Mark mentioned, that's the OPEB liability. It's something we don't talk about that much because it's massive. And the select board, what, a couple of years ago, set, set aside a policy where we're trying to increase our contribution into this fund because in the last conference call with the credit rating agency, there was, they started to talk about the importance of this, and they were going to start viewing this when they rated our credit. So we're being proactive on that to get a slight, as we're maybe never going to be able to fund all of it, but we're going to try to fund as much as we can. So we set a policy to take this up like a quarter percent per year. We felt that the community could, could adjust to that much, but this year we found out we couldn't. We, we've taken money out of that. We've also taken a lot of money out of what we call our capital improvement program, the same fund. We only put a little over $1 million into capital improvement program to take care of a $2 billion resource, and that's not nearly enough. It should be five, six, seven, eight million going in that fund, but we were going to bring that up like one quarter of a percent per year until we get up to maybe three to four million so we can start doing some major infrastructure programs, allow them to bond them and increase our proactive maintenance in our town. The, you know, we stopped growing in the mid-'70s, so the youngest utility systems we have in the ground are 50-some years old at this point. So sooner or later, they are going to start failures, and there's going to be large blocks of failures because our town really grew up in a pretty short span of time. But when the growth stopped in the '70s is when we should have implemented very strong programs, and we didn't because we were, we were basically riding on the good times. Revenues were good, housing values were going up, and the storm clouds weren't on the horizon. Well, you read the papers like I do, the storm clouds are on the horizons across America. So we're trying to implement these policies now, but this year we were, we were sideswiped terribly because of healthcare costs and other things that we just didn't anticipate. So we've had to go back and raid those funds, which I personally, you can tell, I'm not too happy about, but it's, it's something that we had to do. They are policies, so we are able to go back and play around and take money out. They're flexible. So anyway, comments? Anybody wants to talk to the board or make comments about the presentations? We got the chair and the mics are up here. You'll have to come up and introduce yourself. All going to rush?
Good to go.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, come on up, though, Jess.
Well, okay.
Because TV, we want to hear you, want your, your presence felt and, and heard in TV land.
Jess Hutchins, 128 Hilltop Road. I just wanted to know if the, the question and answer portion is going to end and your meeting is going to convene, and then we will no longer be able to ask questions, or if there, there will be some ability for us to ask as you go along tonight?
Well, we've had the presentation, so we're in the open part of the forum right now.
And that's the rest of your meeting is just the forum?
Right, and after this meeting closes down, we're going to go into the cyclic program, or not cyclic, into our capital improvement program. And that's just, that should only take us a half hour, and that's, that stuff's all posted on the web, and that's where we buy our trucks and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
The bottom line, the numbers you've seen here aren't going to be affected, aren't going to change based on the planned discussion of our capital items. Really, it's really preparation of the warrant for town meeting.
Okay.
And you're familiar with the warrant, the capital projects are all separated.
Yes.
So it's kind of getting through those, but in terms of the amount we're spending on capital, it's as reflected in the presentation.
Okay.
And we will be cutting our capital program that was presented because we don't have enough money. So, ladies and gentlemen, anybody would like to come up?
Hi, Dan Lino, 123 Hopkins, please. My comment was that I guess it seems that kindergarten seems to be the big driver in both reducing revenues and driving expenditures, so why are we doing this? In a perfect world, money would not be an obstacle, and kindergarten would be free, but that's not the reality we live with. Besides being a self-inflicted wound, it's patently unfair to the seniors in town, as the current senior center is a dump. I mean, no one would deny that. If all the seniors left town and people with school-aged children moved in, it would impact the town severely and probably bankrupt the town. It seems that we're damaging the whole town for 140 or so families that benefit from free kindergarten. If the school committee wants free kindergarten, then why don't they develop the water tower property and use that for this initiative? If our shortfall, according to the presentation, is at least $125,000, now counting the other $130,000 or so for the OPEB, then why don't we at least charge to that level for those who want to attend full-day kindergarten? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fine, sir.
Jan Kamysko, 46 Northfield Road. I had a question more, I guess, for Mr. Crane. The funding that, I guess, Long Meadow got as an affected community for the casino a year ago or two, is that part of that $500,000 free cash, or what, what happened? What, where did that go, or what's, what's that being used for?
Right now, well, first of all, the, the upfront money that we won through our arbitration award, about $850,000, right now is set aside for functions that the town needs to do in accordance with our arbitration agreement. So there's specifically four intersections on Long Meadow Street that were basically the, the reason why we rewarded the money was because the arbitration panel agreed that the impact of traffic from the casino and the the impact of traffic from the casino in those four intersections was going to be significant and adverse. So, right now, the funds that are being used out of that account are to fund design work to reconfigure those intersections and make improvements to them, and then the money we had, that upfront money isn't going to cover the cost of improvements. So, right now, we're going to work on the design, figure out what it's going to cost, and then develop a financing plan. When the casino opens, within 90 days of them opening, we'll receive, starting annually, $275,000 a year. So, that money is unobligated, but I'm guessing some of that will be to offset the long-term costs of the improvements that have to be made. But again, that's, we haven't received the annual money yet.
Oh, okay.
Good question, though.
And that's if the casino's open. As Mark just whispered in my ear.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, there's a lot of people showed up tonight. There must be something on your mind. How are you?
Hi.
What's your name?
Jan.
J-A-N.
I'm Russell Dupere, Ashford Road. I'm on the school committee as well. So, I did have a few questions about the presentation, Stephen, or Mr. Crane. So, the town budget is basically, it's about 50% schools, 50% everything else. So, the presentation you just presented, previously the numbers appeared to be schools were about 2.5% their half of the budget. The town was 2.5% on their side of the budget, and the total was 2.5%. The new number that we just saw indicates that we have 3% on the school side, which would mean the town side should be roughly 2%. I know some of that's insurance, and that also applies to school employees, but is that generally correct when I just said as far as the total?
The.
You and I have talked about this before.
Spoiler alert. No, the, when you look at the general fund expenditures, the schools' increase based on the select board's actions, or recommendations, I should say, is the 3.09%. On the town side, for operating budgets, and when you look at all the operating expenses, including the set aside for wages that I just described, and combine them all together, it's 1.86% increase for the town. And then, that sets aside debt service and employee benefits, and the employee benefits share covers both town and school employees, so I would say three-quarters of that line item was to cover school. The schools are, two-thirds are better of municipal employees, so easily two-thirds of that employee liability are attributed to school employees.
Okay, but the bottom line is, the overall budget, when it goes up 2.5%, if our side's 3, the other side's roughly 2, depending on how you look at all those benefits and everything, that, you know, I mean, we have tech on our side, you have insurance on your side. I mean, I think a typical community is about, three-quarters of the budget is school, sometimes more than that. As far as some of the charts, like the salary increases, I know you've shown negatives in a lot of your departments, ours is obviously a positive. We do have the salary increases listed in ours, and I think with yours, is it separated out from these numbers? So, like, the public works is negative 1.89, but that's not including whatever may be negotiated in salaries that you have in a separate account. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I really, I didn't go to your meeting last night, so I didn't see the discussion. I understand that there's been a compromise reached that will be presented, or the committee will talk about at our next meeting, hopefully. I will tell you that we looked at our last meeting at a couple of different options. So, I know kindergarten is listed here, but what we actually looked at were a couple of things. So, one was kindergarten at about a $1,300 tuition level. The downside with that is if we eliminate tuition completely, we get roughly $100,000 in the following year in additional state aid. If we continue to tier down, we don't get any money until we get to zero. So, even if we only charge $100, we still don't get the additional money from the state. So, the difference between the two budgets, if we're 125 apart, and we get 100 from the state, you know, that's, I think, why both parties are trying to look at this very carefully. But the other option that we looked at was, we would need to cut three or four teachers at the middle school. So, we have teams of four, and initially, we were looking at potentially laying off all four teachers. It caused class sizes to go up quite a bit. The last presentation we got from Marie was three of four. So, those are the two things that we've looked at so far to try and make this work. Obviously, there may be a third option. You know, we originally talked about music, that was really something the committee didn't want to do, so we took that off the table. So, I'm sure the committee will probably be talking, I would think, about what, if there is a third option. But in your presentation, as far as what would need to happen to make up the other $125,000, it looks like you have either further operational cuts or capital needs. So, what is it that, because all of this is about priorities at the end of the day. The question is, is it kindergarten, is it the middle school team, is it the capital fund? And so, what is it that you are looking at that would be, you know, if we're balancing, when the committee's talking, what are we balancing against? I mean, what is it that the town is trying to save on your side, so we know when we meet?
I would, we haven't specifically identified a list of cuts, but I will tell you that we've gotten to the point of going through, I mean, dozens, that our line item budget is 14 pages, pretty small font, so there are dozens of line items, and we've gone through every line item 10 times, 20 times, trying to wring out every bit of expenditure we can, and we feel like we've gotten to the point where there really isn't a lot of give left. I think we have really cut the policies that are investments in the community to a point where I don't think, I don't want to speak to the board, but based on the conversation last night, discomfort with where we are with those levels right now, I would say positions would probably be in the next round of cuts and not vacant positions. We don't, if we had vacant positions, they would have already been cut. Positions that are currently filled, which translates into a level of service reduction for the community, and then we would have to look at, you know, service, like, you know, hours that, you know, municipal buildings, like the library, the COA, town hall hours of service, perhaps reduce funding categories even more dramatically, which, Mark had a slide, when you look at the future value of a dollar spent today on capital in the future, like any investment, it's a huge, it's a huge loss. It's not dollar-for-dollar, it's exponential loss in value down the line. Yeah, you see that, and that's just OPEB. The other thing I'll say, and this is not, I guess Marx is not a rebuttal, you know, we talk about capital as a town-side function, and even the Department of Public Works, just for folks who, you know, but folks who, other folks who may not know, capital spending includes boiler replacements at schools. The maintenance, the facilities budget for the Department of Public Works, by and large, goes towards maintaining our schools. So, there are, I think the three-quarters of the school, of the town budget going to schools is accurate, if not a little short here, even though it says, you know, 53%. It's much larger than that because there are many town-side costs that are, that really are directed at schools, crossing guards, things like that. And it's not, like, we're not trying to keep score necessarily, we're just trying to, as I said at the meeting last night, I just want to enumerate for the community what the costs of all these things are, and where their money goes. I think ideally, in a perfect world, one of the reasons why I think we've had successful budget processes in the last two years is we were able to get to a point where costs and revenues went up equally. So, even though the school was still a large, the three-quarters or more percentage of the budget, we were able to increase our services on an equitable level, everybody moving up 2.5%. And this year, that's, it's not really, and like I said, even with the salaries built in, it's still only 1.8%. So, and I think we talked about last night, if you look at the line item from the school's budget of revenue, of $351,000 in tuition revenue going to a zero, that one move, that one change really drives the pressure. And I think no one here has said that, you know, they're not supportive of the principal, I shouldn't say no one, but I think generally, the board's view has been that we're not supportive of the schools trying to do what they feel is important. It's just trying to articulate and enumerate what's the cost out of this fixed pie, what gets, what line gets moved, and what gets cut out.
If I could just continue, Mr. Dupere, just, it's my answer, not the board's answer. As we look to make this adjustment, in fact, the number of 125 that we said, we can't close that gap anymore on the town side, is actually a number of 225, okay? That's as close as we got, but we said, but, and you alluded to this, if the school committee is truly committed to free full-day kindergarten in the following year, fiscal year 2018, the state will reimburse us an additional $100,000. And so, for fiscal year 2017, at least $100,000 of that 225 difference is one time that the town needs to come up with the money. And although we've got a bunch of people on our audit committee and our finance committee say you cannot use one-time money for reoccurring costs, we believe we can use one-time money for one-time cost. And so, the budget that the town manager prepared tonight includes his revenue, $100,000 from free cash, so that we didn't ask the school committee for 225 to close the gap, but instead of only ask the school committee 125 to close the gap. I'll speak for myself to say that if I thought the town, general government side, be they, you know, employee benefits or direct services or anything else could have gotten below that 225, we'd have done it because moving money out of free cash is no great shakes. But, so, that's my answer. We're there.
Can I follow up with that for one second? Hold on, I just want to have a factual clarification, and I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly, so I'm going to turn to Paul, Mr. Zick. My recollection from the vote last night was, we had 79 or 80,000 of free cash, not 100. Okay, so 79.
I'm sorry. Is it 79 that we ended up with?
Yeah, 79.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that was asked. So, I heard a variety of things about last night's meeting, and I tried to clarify with you two today. The, so the committee's looking really at a couple of things. So, if we go with no cost or tuitionless kindergarten, that's when we get the 100 grand. If we do anything but that, we don't. So, if on the committee's side, we're looking at this, and we decide we want to keep the middle school team, instead of going with no tuition for kindergarten, what's the board going to do with that if you're including, you know, the 79 or 80,000 in your budget from free cash? Because I heard a variety of comments about, well, it would affect it, wouldn't affect it, I don't know. I mean, when we go back, we need to think about that, obviously.
I think we'll be able to answer that when you come back with your answer, because that's going to take deliberation by this board. But I can share with, we've heard these OPEB and these different things, and Alex just corrected, it was good correction you made, because we talked about $100,000 in free cash, and it ended up to be 79,500. But what we took out of these programs that we've designed for the long-term health of our community, and I say our community, including the schools and everybody in there, was at OPEB. We took $131,079 out of that fund this year that we were going to put in there, and we brought it back in to fund our budget. We also took $148,000 of our capital improvement budget and brought it back in. The chart that Mark just had, that $148,000 in this year is X is 148,000, but when you run it on out for 20 years, it jumps up to about $700,000 worth of value. We took 81, we took additional levy, we were talking about going 2.25%, and we took it up very close to 2.5. I think it's $29,000 on it, 2.5. That meant we threw in an additional $81,000 worth of tax levy. It goes to you. I mean, we were trying to save that quarter percent, we were trying to start a trend, a prudent management to start taking that down very slowly, as Stephen said, to kind of slow down the train, getting to the end of the road. That totaled out at $439,719 worth of money that we were intending to put into funds for the long-term benefit of our community, minus the 79,000 in free cash, that we have had to bring back out. And these are our policies, and we set policy for the community. So, we have had to back way off on our policies. I can tell, I personally don't like to do that, because that's the wrong direction we're taking the community in. I think somebody mentioned last night, we had policies versus policy, because the schools said we want a policy of funding full-day kindergarten, so we had a dueling policies is taking place. And that's the best definition I think we can make of it. And after long deliberations, we said, okay, we'll try to meet as heavy as we can in the middle on this dueling policy issue, and that brought in the offer of the 125. And that had been all over the place. It was a 150 offer. There was talk of an override, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, you brought that up.
I said there was talk of an override. Just give me a minute, I'll finish my statement.
Nobody else said it.
Because when you are going into reserve funds at this level, to me, it signals you're not healthy. Because if we set policy that we said we need this much money to start building, and when we start taking that back out, we're going the other way. We're backing down now instead of moving forward. So, we're not planning on the future anymore. So, that's why I said, why don't we gather all of these costs that we've been hit with this year, just this year, and do an override for about, what, 550,000 or whatever it was? It was a fairly small override, as far as overrides go. That way, we would have set the clock again, but I didn't get any traction with it. I'm the only one that wanted to do it, and I'm not, I'm not saying I want to rob your money, I'm just saying, I looked at it from a fiscal management part, and I said, I don't want to violate our policies. So, and you're right, it wasn't widespread talk, it didn't get much traction up here. So, that's where we're at. So, Russ's talk is valid, and our talk is valid. We're at a point where we don't know where to find the money, we don't know where it's hidden. But we're at the point where we're having to make some serious, serious reductions on policies that were intended to be for the long-term health of our community.
Yeah, and I do think it comes down to that. I don't think it's a question of right and wrong, it's about balancing priorities, and I totally agree with that. I think if the committee doesn't know the stance on the 80 grand, it's going to make us real, real hard for us to respond, because if we pick middle school, and we don't know if we're going to lose another 80 grand, because if that would be, that could mean one of the other programs that we were looking at before. And so, we might have to cut more than one thing to make middle school come back if we're not going to get the extra, you know, 175 or 80 of it, I guess. So, that would be something that I think is going to be really difficult, and it's not really something I think you can answer today, I guess, because you didn't vote on it last meeting. But I will say, it's going to be tough on our side to decide that, I think. As far as OPEB and the capital, so you decreased, but are you saving what you saved last year? Are you saving less than you saved last year?
Right, Mark mentioned that. We're still putting a little bit more in than we did last year, but we violated our policy. Our policy was to increase it by a quarter percent until we get it up to a certain level, especially on the capital program.
Russ, I'll repeat the numbers. Last year, we put 237.3 into OPEB, and this year, we will put 244.721. The $7,000 is, you know, again, out of $31 million obligation, so.
From the policy standpoint, though, where you have that OPEB number at 0.5% of the levy, you've met that, and you're just going up by the incremental amount that the levy went up. So, as much as you're saying you went up 3%, you went up by the policy that was established in FY '16, as opposed to the policy that you wanted in '17. And the same holds true with capital. You had to maintain your 16 levels as opposed to going up to your 17 levels.
And OPEB focuses for the entire communities, for the schools and the governments, or the regular side of the government. That's all the employee benefits. So, it's on the town side, but it's post-employment benefits to every employee that retires from our community. And the capital is for everything in our community, including, if you stay for the capital meeting later, you will hear there's a large block of money for school repairs this year. So, these funds aren't just for us, they are for the entire community.
Yeah, so, on our side, what we've done so far, because we understand that, you know, this isn't the easiest budget year, and, you know, everybody's going to have to make some cuts. So, what we've done so far is we've cut about $265,000 worth of staff. We cut in a whole bunch of other areas, so, you know, the total's around 600, 665, something like that, from what I recall. And we tried to cut in a whole bunch of areas, so we cut in tech and supplies and PD, and we cut a number of staff. The dilemma we have here is if we don't do kindergarten. The, the dilemma we have here is if we don't do kindergarten, we don't get 100,000 in the following year. If we cut the middle school team, we may never get them back, because the budget, I mean, I agree with you, we're going to hit 25 per thousand in a few years, we have, we have some long-term problems, and if we cut a team like that, the chances of us hiring back, you know, three or four teachers, it's about 220,000, that's going to be real tough to do. So, we're acutely aware of that, and, and I think it's the enrollment, we've been watching it to see if we could do it at some point. The problem with doing it this year is it could result in very high-class exercises at Williams.
But Russ, has, has the school committee looked at some of your available funds? And I'll, using as example, the parking lot fund. It was established for a couple of reasons, in my opinion. One was to restrict the, when the high school was the old high school, to restrict the number of kids who were coming, but ostensibly, it says to help to take care of the high school. Not a dime's gone to additional, back to the town for plowing, when the new, the old high school had to be resurfaced, nobody paid for it, when this, you know, that's a fund that's available, in my opinion, and I'm an outsider, I don't know the details. And there are other school choice funds and other funds, so when you tell us to look at our funds, I'm going to just turn the, the mirror and say, "Have you looked at all your funds?"
Yeah, we did. So, we have 250,000 in school choice, and I have, I mean, a lot of places have millions in school choice, so it's not great that we're at 250. And our policy on our side for that is, we're supposed to be at 250 or 300 minimum, we try never to go below that. So, you know, that's a potential place to look. I did speak with the business manager today about, is there other places to look? But most of those places, you're talking five grand, seven grand, I mean, it's, it's not, the issue you're facing is the issue we face. 120,000 doesn't sound like a lot, when you're looking at budgets that are $33 million. But at the end of the day, where we are, because we keep cutting and shrinking every year, and that's going to happen continuously, it's not easy to get to that number, which is why I'm asking some of these questions, is, you know, the committee's going to have to talk about it, to see if we can. I will say, the kindergarten thing is going to come up year after year. It's going to be an issue for all of us until we figure it out. And, and everybody else in Western Mass, and really, most of the way to Worcester, has already eliminated it. The problem we have is we didn't do it over time, and we're still looking at it now. And until you actually get it done, you don't start getting more money. The other problem is the state's looking at potentially, you know, mandating it in a couple of years, which has been on the horizon for a while. So, I think it's something that is very important to the committee, I think it's important to a lot of parents, too. And it's not just the 140, it's really anybody moving into the town, it's a, it's a consideration. When you have, you know, really the highest tax rate in the state, not by the overall amount that we assess, but the actual number, you know, the 23-something. And you add on to that, well, if I'm a new family moving in, and I got to pay for tuition to go to kindergarten, when I don't, in East Long Meadow or Wilbraham, I mean, that's a consideration, so. And the middle school team is very important, too. So, and, and your priorities are important, I'm not, you know, discounting those. But I think we need to try and get to a point where we can get to a number that works for all of us.
Sure. So, just to clarify a couple of things that you were talking about. So, there, there was a 58,000, the way it's set up now, from what the town manager presented, it's a $58,000 increase to capital over last year's budget. There's a $7,000 increase of OPEB, as Mark indicated, and there's also $29,000 of a new tax levy. And then, there's an additional $20,000 of free cash that would legitimately be able to be used for a one-time expenditure. The other thing that I'd like to clarify is, because I, I put it out there, is about the crossing guards, and I've had some very productive discussions with the police chief, and I've been able to really understand exactly what's going on. And the police chief clarified for me that, actually, the number of crossing guards is not going from 23 to 16 to 18. The original proposal actually was from 23 to 21, and then we talked about which places that was going to be. And so, one of the things that we, that I suggested, and, and the board supported, was actually putting one of those back for 5,500, and that would be at Long Meadow and Converse Street, and there would just be a reduction of one at a place where there are comparatively few kids. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because, you know, I, I had talked about it. The other thing that I'd like to just mention is, I, I didn't support this budget, I voted against it last night. And, you know, we've talked a lot about the kindergarten, but I think it really kind of has to do with the whole school system. You know, what we do in the kindergarten level impacts the expenditures we have to pay throughout, because one of the things that we found is that early education has a 7 to 1 return, which I think is even better than compound interest. And, you know, one of the commenters talked about 140 kids, and it's not just the 140 kids, it's 140 kids every year. But I guess for me, it's a kind of a more fundamental issue with full-day kindergarten, because for a long time, we didn't have full-day kindergarten, but for very few kids. We had full-day kindergarten that's available by lottery, and one of the things they had to do was to make sure that the full-day kids didn't do any more than the half-day kids, because they didn't want to have a two-tiered system, they didn't want to have, deliver a different education. And the thing is, you can't force somebody to pay for school. So, that's the reason why we have a half-day program right now, which actually costs more. So, if we're able to get to full-day kindergarten, we can actually reduce costs and get the $100,000 back, which is kind of a win-win. But I guess, but the fundamental issue is, we have a two-tiered system right now, based on ability to pay. And that's, I, I don't think is right, and, and I don't think anybody who is in that second tier would want to be in that second tier, if they could face it. And that two-tiered system, it just isn't right, because you've got some kids that are going half, and some that are going full, and there's no way you can learn in half the time what you do in the full term. So, to me, this is something that we've got to get right. It's something that almost every community in Massachusetts has gotten to, certainly every community in Western Massachusetts. So, that's, that's one of the reasons why I voted against it. The other issue is some of the painful cuts that Russ was just talking about, on top of the 646,000 that were outlined by the school superintendent. And I think the other thing to keep in mind, and this is somewhat true on the town side, as well as the school side, when we, you start off, you don't, if you don't want to do anything new, you've got increases, for the reasons why Mr. Welker was talking about, union contracts. So, the schools started out with like $900,000 of mandated increased costs, if, if they did absolutely nothing different. And that, so that's why they had to do all those cuts before they could even come to us. So, I think it's important to understand that, and, and, and Mr. Welker's correct, that we are agreeing to these contracts, and we're negotiating them. But having been part of the, in the discussions about union contracts, if there was a way to, to get to lower union contracts, it would have been done, you know, if it was easy, everybody would be doing it. The fact is, nobody's doing it, because it's so hard. So, on the other hand, we, when we look at OPEB, you've got a different issue for me. The way I look at it, you know, we're, we're kind of, I don't know, putting a spoonful of water into the ocean, because what's going on is, we cannot affect costs. That's based on healthcare policy that's made at the federal level and at the state level. All we can do is keep, we can just keep shoveling money at the problem. And the fact is, nobody's going to be able to solve that problem. You can't, you can't pay enough to get to this 30-year unfunded liability that we've just been talking about. And so, I'm faced with making a symbolic increased contribution, and by the way, I asked our auditor a couple of years, our professional auditor, whether there was a material difference between the OPEB contribution that we're making and the number zero, and he said there was no material difference. That's because of the nature of the problem that I just talked about. So, to me, to sacrifice something that has proven value for something that's symbolic, I just have a problem with. So, it's for those reasons that I'm not supporting this budget, and it's, you know, and it's not because there are any easy solutions to any of this, but it's just a different balancing that I'm making.
So, can I just, I'm done asking questions, except, can you run through those numbers again, because I just, I mean, you just voted last night, so...
Yeah, so...
It's 20,000 free cash.
20,000 free cash, $29,000 levy, there was a...
And that would be if you went all the way to 2 and 1/2.
Right, as we've done every year.
Yeah.
And then, $58,000 increase of capital, and a $7,000 increase to OPEB.
And I feel I really have to speak up in regards to where we're going with this budget. What you described, the difficulties we have this year, we're going to have every single year, and it's going to get to the point where it just can't be done anymore. And when we say it's symbolic to OPEB, no, it's not symbolic, these are people. We have made promises to every single member of the community who's worked, employed by this town, that we are going to pay 50% of their healthcare costs for the rest of their lives. And as you're hiring those new teachers, whether they're at Williams School, or you're hiring them in the kindergarten, a promise is being made to them, that we're going to pay for their retirement money. We can't do that. These are false promises. So, when you're going and you're talking to unions, and you're hiring people, and you're negotiating contracts, you're saying, "Okay, in the future, we'll have enough money." We're already spending a million dollars a year. Every year, we're going to be seeing this increase. There's towns across the Commonwealth who already, there are more retirees than are active. We're seeing that in the very near future. So, what's going to happen? And everyone says, "Well, it's symbolic, we can't do anything about it." Well, what's going to happen is what happened in Rhode Island, where the town finally said, "Oh, sorry, I know we made these promises, but we're not paying." So, there are officers, police officers, there are firemen, that all of a sudden, were told, "We're not paying your retirement healthcare," and they say, "Hold, we don't even have social security. We're not allowed to get that, we don't have pensions." And you know what? They were left out in the cold. So, when we say, "This is symbolic," no, this is, this is people. These are people that are now sitting in your schools going, and they're being, they're teachers, there are police officers and there are firemen. So, when we say, "Oh, well, what are you going to cut? Because we're cutting a teacher, we're cutting this," we have to look at the long-term here, and it's really, really serious. How are we going to fulfill those promises in five to 10 years, because it's eating away and, at our costs? When you see that increase, that increase, we were able to pull back from the wall, because there were some serious changes made in the retirement health plans. There's going to come a time where we're going to have to say, "We cannot hire all these people. We need to pull back, because we need the obligations." Now, we talk about the infrastructure, it's not, again, what are you going to cut? "Oh, it's another 10,000, it doesn't matter." We'll tell that to people in Flint, Michigan, because they said, "All those years, let's not look at our old infrastructure. We have gas pipes, we have everything going back, super, super old stuff." And what we've been doing over the years is, we've been saying, "It's not glamorous, we can pull it back, we don't need to do these sidewalks, we'll pull back, we'll pull back." And then eventually, the piper says, "You can't pull back anymore, there's a huge collapsing drainage system over there, and you got to take care of it." And we're not even talking about the new EPA rules that have come in, and what's going to be coming up in the next year or two, that's going to hit us with, again, what are you cutting back? Federal government's going to say, "No, you have to put more investment in your storm waters." So, when we look at all of those things, and the last unglamorous thing are these reserve funds. So, everyone says, "Oh, my gosh, you got $500,000 free cash, what are you doing with that money?" "We're putting it in the reserve fund." Why are you doing that? Because, a very scary talk, our CFO said, "You know, the bonding people weren't happy with you last year, they said you really had to be higher. So, where are we getting to this year? Are we being able to get up to six? They really wanted us at 10." No, we're slipping back. We're slipping back to 5 and 1/2. So, when are we going to go, and we're going to ask for the new middle school, it might cost us a lot more money? So, when we sit there and we look on how we're going to do everything, it, it's not, it's not a pretty process. And I know it's not a pretty process on your side, but the other thing, I heard the gentleman speak, and I went to a conference, and they said, "As of December 31st, 2016, in Massachusetts, there will be more, the population above 65 is substantially higher than the population below 20." Now, all our research we've been doing on the senior center, our population is, is booming in the seniors, and these seniors have new needs that the seniors didn't have 20 years ago. And we haven't even started to look on what programs we need. So, every year, we go, and you say, "Well, we're doing a new math program for the middle school, we're doing this new program." We don't do new programs, because we're trying to just provide the services we're supposed to provide. So, when all of our department heads that came up, and they said, "Well, we would love to do this new program," but we were cut back. So, one of the things we asked them, "Well, if you had the money, what would you do?" All these wonderful new programs are just sitting in the departments they would love to do, and they can't do it. Our fire chief said, "We could really expand, we, we have to turn away half the, 1/3 of the ambulance calls that come in, because we need another guy to be able to do that." So, our Long Meadow people have to get ambulance service elsewhere, because we don't, we can't do that. The senior COA said, "We would do $10,000, just $10,000, if we had that, we could do breakfast." The seniors are coming, the mornings are where they're really needed. We do have seniors in town who don't depend on that lunch for a warm meal, we can't do it. So, every year, we're pulling back. The DPW head said, "Well, I'd really like to be able to do some sidewalk repairs, decent ones, in, in our actual facility, rather than having to contract a lot of that out." So, some of this could actually be savings, and we can't do it, because every year, we're pulling back, pulling back, because the big giant healthcare is eating up, or pension, we got hit with $350,000 last year in pension. So, I don't, and what is the answer? I don't know the answer. So, every year, we, we juggle, we shift around, and then the schools juggle, and they shift around, because we keep squeezing it, squeezing it, and it's just, at some point in time, we'll finally get hit with the thing, and we'll have to sit back and say, "We can't do it, we can't do it." And that's why Mr. Foster said, "I don't think we can do it this year, because all you're doing is, what is the term, robbing Peter to pay Paul? And in five years, we're going to get hit with what we didn't do this year. In 10 years, we're going to have the employees sitting in front of us saying, 'What do you mean, you're no longer paying 50%? Oh, because the legislature said, 'In order to save us, we're now only going to pay 20% of your healthcare costs.'" So, something like that is going to explode, and then they'll say, "Where were our elected officials in 2016?" And that's what they're saying around the country. So, and so, what I do is I say, "Well, we did what we could this year, we're moving in the right direction, you're doing what you can this year, we're moving in the right direction, but every year, something has to give." And I don't know what will be this year. At the end, when we finally settle in town floor, and everyone goes away, and then does their jobs, we'll be back again next year with an even tougher year, I'm sure, unfortunately. What hit us last year, Affordable Care Act. Those fees were huge, the drug costs are unbelievable, and that's why Skankin Valley actually has a program where we buy medications from Canada in order to decrease costs. So, we're all doing the best we can. But I don't think OPEB is just symbolic, I think it's people, and that's what really worries me.
Well, for tonight, I haven't been making any arguments, if you notice, I'm just asking questions, because I don't have authorization to sit here and say what you did last night isn't, is acceptable or isn't, because we haven't voted. So, I'm, I'm really just trying to gather the information at this point. I mean, I think, I understand all those arguments, I, I guess the one response I would give you on new initiatives is, we really haven't, the textbooks, what we're doing is, if we make it to the end of the year, and we have any money left over, we buy textbooks. That's really the initiative. I mean, the new math program is really, we have old material, we're trying to do that at the high school this year, because we built, you know, I think those books are from 1994. So, and we're not going to have the money to do it, most likely, I mean, it looks like we can't do it this year, anyway. But we don't really have new initiatives, and we wanted to do a new health program at the elementary, which you assume we already have, which we don't. But we're not going to do that either, that was part of what we cut to try and compromise with you. So, I'm not going to make any arguments tonight, at some point, maybe we'll all be making arguments, but tonight, I was just trying to gather facts. I'm sure there's other people that want to make arguments, I'll let them do that, but thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Come on up. Name and address, please.
My name is Mary Seaplick, I live at 22 Crest Avenue. I just want to state that I understand that there's no easy solution, this is kind of like an unsolvable math problem. That being said, I also want to say I don't have any personal agenda... That being said, I also want to say I don't have any personal agenda in any of these things that the schools are trying to do. My youngest child is a freshman at the high school. So the kindergarten and the middle school does not impact us personally as a family. That being said, I'm a middle school principal in another district and I see the benefits of having a full day kindergarten. And it's imperative, when you look at the common core state standards and what the schools are trying to do, and when those standards have moved from grade to grade lower and what the teachers are expected to teach, it's really difficult to do that when you have a half day and a full day option. That being said, I think that it's also difficult for the teachers in first grade to try and catch up the kids who had a half day or, you know, balance it with the kids who had full day or the kids that had a half day and went to a Montessori or other type of private program. So it's just really difficult. So I wouldn't encourage, again, I understand there's no easy solution, but I would encourage you to see the benefit of that full day kindergarten and the importance for our, our community and its growth. With the middle school program, I would again strongly encourage you to think about the importance of that. When you look at the middle level education and increasing class sizes, I can tell you personally, it's really difficult to help our struggling learners if they're in class sizes of 25. And that's really what would they'd be looking at and that, that size does not work at middle level education for kids that are struggling. So I just wanted to say that. Again, thank you for your service and what you're doing. I understand it's not an easy process.
Thank you, Mary.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Now, one of the things I've heard is that the class sizes could go a little north of 25 to like 29 or 30. What would, in your view, what would be the impact of that?
Um, I think, you know, it depends on the class. I think if it's in algebra and it's the kids, kids that are high achieving, it's one thing. But if it's a low level math class or, you know, a, a low level English class, I think that that's really difficult. And I think that that, you know, would not be, it would not behoove our students, it would not behoove our teachers and it truly, it impacts our town.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
I'd just like to clarify, just clarify a comment. Personally, I'm doing all I can to support what I thought was a vote by the school committee to have free full day kindergarten. I, I don't believe there was any discussion on the select board that said, we don't want to have free full day kindergarten. It's, we want to do everything we can to help the school committee implement that. And it's becomes a financial step. I think to, you know, I think it's not, not a good assessment of the select board to say you're trying to prevent, or you're the folks that are stopping free full day kindergarten. Because if, if there was, I believe, a, a strong opinion against free full day kindergarten, we wouldn't have spent the last four nights trying to get as close as we did to funding, to providing funds for, for the school department and clearly moving beyond what the town manager second budget proposal had. And so what everybody ought to hear is that what we're seeing tonight, or what you saw tonight is at least the third, maybe the fourth iteration of, of the budget, each trying to get closer to a situation where we could, we could run the general government side of, of Long Meadow and get closer for the school department and the school committee to implement a, a proposal that they've already approved. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're going to hear a lot, select board, please fund full, free, free full day kindergarten. We're working toward that. We've come a long way from where we were on February 29th, when the first budget came, came forward. We've come at least halfway, if not more.
Please follow.
Sure. One of the things, I appreciate your comments very much. One of the things that is new to me that you mentioned that's interesting is the, the class size somewhat, the impact somewhat depending on the type of class. And that's something that, I mean, we, we look at, you know, class size is often presented as this kind of an absolute metric, but it's interesting to me that it depends on what the subject is and what the type of students are of the impact. So I'm interested in learning as we go through the process additionally from the school department, the classes that specifically they're looking on and kind of getting that second layer of data. Additionally, and we talked about, I asked the chair about this and I want to learn more about this as well, is of the 14 families that are not participating in full day kindergarten, because everything I've heard from the school district superintendent confirms what you're saying, which is, and Alex made, made the comment too, if you're not, if you don't have that full day education, going into first grade, the, the gap is wider. I think, I certainly believe that. I've said many times, the benefits of a full day kindergarten program are, I, I completely believe them based on the information I've received, I've heard from the superintendent and the school committee. But when we talk about the costs and a two-tiered system, I want, I'm interested to see, learning more about if the financial component of it truly is a barrier to achieving that full day kindergarten of the 14, you know, it's 140 families, if 14 are not doing it, 90, they have a 90% enrollment rate. That's pretty good, I think. So I'm interested in learning as we go through the process and the school committee more about what the final financial constraints for the families are.
Okay, Jim.
Yes, Jim Moran, 48 Avondale Road. And Stephen, I'd like to go back to your first chart when you basically put down public schools at 53% of our budget. And, and I recognize fully that that's not the cost of educating our students. I mean, the school committee doesn't take care of items like school department employee retiring benefits. Marie was talking about the escalating costs there, school maintenance, the debt service on this building and all the rest of it. And most of it, as Paul said, was, was oriented towards schools. School crossing guards is covered by the town side and capital expenditures, any projects that in terms of repairing boilers in schools and whatever else is considered as part of the town side. So if you look at that, I think this current year is like $10 million of additional expenses that are our school department related that add to the $33 million you have this year. So that's $43 million, which means the total expense percentage of the pie as you, as you shaped is 70%, all right, as opposed to 53%. So we are spending seven, 70 cents out of every dollar toward educating our students. Okay, now the question I have for you, have you looked at the cost for that increment that's not on the school department, on the school committee side, what the cost has increased this year in this, in this current budget? Do you have any idea how much, how many dollars are increasing that it's part of the town side of the budget?
So town side services that are to the benefit of the schools and the cost of those. We haven't really done a score sheet. I mean, we, we know, you know, kind of in an order of magnitude, Jim. We've just been focusing on trying to go through our own line items and just try and get the, try and make sure our revenue projections are accurate and maybe even be a little less conservative than we normally are, which you hate to do because one of the reasons why we have that high bond rating is that we manage our, we manage ourselves very conservatively. But the, I mean, in terms of saying like, here's where all their stuff is going, no, we haven't really approached it that way. We've really looked at it in a holistic way.
But if I just, if I just take employee benefits and Marie, I think the number was $500,000, all right, of increase this year. So we have 80% of our town employees are school related. So that's $400,000 increase right there without even doing any guessing. Is that a reasonable expectation? So you're covering $400,000 on your time, on your side of the budget of increased employee benefits. And that's not any retiree, you know, current employees. And it goes back to Marie's point on OPEB. These are things we're trying to match and try to defend so that the cost of educating our students doesn't skyrocket to 85%. You know, and as we build more schools and whatever else, that just drives that percentage up. And so, yeah, I remember Russ was making a comment about the percentages, you know, the school department went up 3%. So your side must've gone up two and a half percent. Well, that's not true because you're covering, you're covering the school side of stuff. It's not general government, it's not police, it's not fire. And is that, is that a reasonable explanation of what's really going on here?
Yeah, I think, I tried to allude to some of that earlier, that there are benefits for the school district that are carried, not in their slice of the pie you just alluded, alluded to.
$10 million worth, right?
And I think even Russ in his comments that it's, most communities are about 75%. And I said, that's probably about right or even a little more. But like I said, Jim, we've just, sincerely, we've just been trying to keep focused on getting the budget to the select board, getting a capital plan that is, you know, doing the greatest good for the greatest number for the money we have in our hands. You know, we haven't drilled down to that level. I mean, as, as Russ said, maybe if we aren't able to reach a compromise, maybe we will start kind of, you know, in terms of enumerating for the community what the costs are. But, you know, generally speaking, we know what percentage of the employee benefits are attributable to schools. The capital plan has not been finalized. So in terms of the 1.4 that's being spent on capital, I can't, as we sit here right now, tell you what's going to the schools and what's not.
I guess I'm concerned about that if, you know, if you have $400,000 of increased benefits that are attributable to school department employees and retirees, all right, that's coming from someplace and reduced services someplace on your side, right? Is that not true? And you said you haven't highlighted all the services we're going to lose in the next fiscal year. But that's the one thing I'm concerned about.
No, I, I agree with you, Jim. And I think the one, I think I did say earlier, and I guess it may bear repeating, we acknowledge that the schools did not create any new initiatives. The, what's causing the strife on the budget is the loss of revenue. That $351,000 in kindergarten tuitions, that was revenue generated by the schools. That is a zero now and as Mark said, we've pushed as much of our stuff to fill that $351,000 gap as we feel like we can reasonably do and continue to provide services to the rest of the community. And so...
In addition to the 400,000 I just spoke about, right? So that's, now we're talking about a much larger number, all right? So again, I'm just concerned about as you drive all those things to, you know, to, and I think the first number you put was on your original town manager budget, said there, there were $70,000 over, over last year. Now that, that was your, your original presentation you made to the select board and now it's a little different and things have changed around a bit. So that's almost like a flat budget, all right? You've been able to absorb all those things. That means you had to cut other things throughout your entire budget, you know? I mean, police and fire are important to us public safety. And so I'm just, I'm just curious and I'm sure you got it covered and just, you know, for other people to understand when we're looking at, well, the select board's got to come up with another $100,000 to support all day kindergarten. It's not as simple as that in terms of other things you've already done to get to that point. So I just, that's the only point I really wanted to make.
I just want to make a point that we're in it together.
Well, I understand. I'm just, I'm just...
And I think one of the things we've started discussing is even though it's on our side of the ledger, we sit down and we talk throughout the year on how we really can keep down these costs because it's, it's just so much in, in one area and the schools realize that the OPEB is a serious problem. They're very interested in maintenance on the infrastructure. So it's just a process we go through till we finally get all the priorities and level out and figure where we're going to be. But I don't want it to feel as if it's school against the town because it's not, we're working together.
I clear agree. We don't want, we want, we're all in here together, we're all, you know, we all pay our taxes and we all want balance, all right? And we want balance in our schools. And I think that was some, that was in Stephen's original presentation, he said, let's have balance in how we spend our money because we're going to get to that $25 per thousand probably in four years, Paul, or five years, you know? It's going to be there. And that means we're not going to raise taxes at all. So we're not going to have the million dollars that comes from proposition two and a half levy, all right? So that million dollars in, in four years or five years, we're not going to have that. And so it's even going to be that much tougher. So, you know, the fiscally responsible thing is to, is to learn how to live within, within the means, to do all that we need to do for our kids, all right? As well as, you know, and I think the number was two out of three households in Long Meadow don't have kids in school, all right? So we have a changing demographic and I'm part of it. Everybody's part of the changing demographic. So, you know, we've got major capital projects on our agenda, all right, that we're talking about doing. We've got DPW, senior and, and middle school, all right? So part of it is to be fiscally responsible how we go forward. So I just wanted to make some comments.
Thank you, Jim.
And I want to make a point, it's not just the two boards, audit, finance, capital planning, we're all struggling with these same issues and we're working together as a town. And I think we're making progress.
And the finance committee is not in the process just yet, right?
No.
They will be at some...
We haven't voted on our budget yet.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and further on Jim's point, he did bring up a good point. We've talked about it, but we didn't place it out as he said. If, if, if the prop two and a half would award the schools two and a half percent per year, what is not being told is behind the scenes, the town may be picking up three quarters of a percent in benefit increases. So if they got a two and a half, that three quarter of a percent is being taken up on the town side because the schools do not pay, they do not pay the benefits on that stuff. It's all on the town side. So when you hear these percentages, Jim brought up a good point, behind the scenes, there's a lot of other things that took place. There was a lot of money that was had to be stashed away that is not accounted for on that 3.9% that Stephen's showing for the schools. All of these benefits we talked about are not in that figure. That strictly is raw cash increase to the schools. Okay? Yes, sir?
My name is Moore Rozak, 1657 Long Meadow Street. Just to have a couple of comments and just a couple of recommendations here. I just wanted to thank everybody from the finance committee and the town committee here is for coming up with the free full day kindergarten. And I just wanted to tell everybody that how delighted I am and my family is and because education and learning is the number one factor in my family. And that was one of the driving factors to move to Long Meadow. I'm new to Long Meadow about seven months ago. We moved here and the school system, the public school system and the education was the primary factor that we considered in moving to Long Meadow. And I just wanted to thank you very much, all of you for considering that. And again, when Mr. Grant talked about the half day and the full day kindergarten and the lottery system, I think it was, in my opinion, it was, it was not benefiting the kids who are going only half a day and it was discriminatory in, in my opinion. But, but we are very, very delighted that, that it's, it's coming to, in practical terms. Just one recommendation that I would like to make to come up with that $125,000 that is still a shortfall. I know it's almost 99.9% residential community, which is, which is a very good thing. Maybe if you allow, two or three businesses come in the strip area where, along by the Big Y area, that will, the property taxes for two or three businesses will just pay for the $125,000 shortfall. I mean, just a recommendation that I just came up with, maybe you can think about it. Other than that, I just wanted to thank everyone for considering that and we are very delighted and we are happy to move to Long Meadow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Katie Newton. I live at 106 Northfield Road. I apologize, Mr. Gold, I think I read the, between the lines of what you're saying that you've heard a million issues of support for the full day kindergarten, but you're talking about competing priorities and I think it's important that we share why the full day kindergarten being covered is a priority. So I'd like to read what I wrote. I'm nervous, so I'm going kind of fast.
Take your time.
I hope it comes out right. All right. So I'm a mother to two children, a five-year-old son who will be entering kindergarten. So I am one of those 140 families that would be directly impacted by the full free day, free full day kindergarten. And I also have a two-year-old daughter. My family, I moved to Long Meadow from Michigan nearly three years ago for my husband's job. When deciding where to live, we looked at many communities in Massachusetts and Connecticut and ultimately settled on Long Meadow because of the wonderful school district and also the friendly family community. We love Long Meadow. We are so happy to have moved here. I think it's a wonderful town. We have no disappointment except for the kindergarten issue and maybe the high taxes, but that's another. The year after we moved here...
Maybe the high taxes.
Maybe the high taxes.
I'm going to answer that.
It's putting two thoughts together.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I know, I know. I had that thought too, boy, that, I'm really conflicting myself. But the year after we moved here, the changes were made to the kindergarten program, where under said it was lottery before, and there was a big push or move to most children being enrolled in the full-day program for a fee. Just as a community member, I didn't really have a dog in the fight at that point, but just being a community member, I heard all the wonderful benefits for full-day, and I know you guys have heard them all, so I'm not going to list them all off. But what I took away from it is that, when thinking about my own children, if I were to not enroll them in the full-day program, they would be left behind, that they would not be getting what they needed when they went into first grade. Prior to moving to Massachusetts, I had never heard of having to pay for kindergarten. In Michigan, that is not an issue. I just thought it was a basic right that all children, regardless of ability to pay, would have access to the recommended level of learning and education from kindergarten through high school. So I was very surprised and disappointed it was occurring in the country, but more specifically here in Long Meadow, for we've moved to a town where it seemed that education is of the utmost importance, and something the town prided itself on. The homes aren't new, the taxes are really high, more than I would have ever dreamed I would pay, but the schools are great. But what does it say about a community that doesn't support their children's education by offering every child the very best from the start? I have to admit, it made me question the town's commitment to education, it made me question my faith in the town. And I wonder if it'll make those that are looking for a home in Long Meadow in the Massachusetts, western Massachusetts area, question that as well. I've heard there might soon be a mandate that free full-day kindergarten be provided to all in the state of Massachusetts. I hope this happens, but I hope it doesn't take a mandate to make us make that choice. And I hope it doesn't take the towns that we compare ourselves to in the Boston suburbs to do it for us to do it as well. One might look at the numbers of enrollees in the full-day kindergarten program over the past few years and say, "People are making it work, what's the problem? They're going to keep making it work." But I think the fact that such a large portion are enrolling in the full-day kindergarten speaks more to the quality of the families in Long Meadow more than anything else. You know, parents here, we're going to do whatever it takes to make sure our children are receiving the education they need, and if free full-day kindergarten is not provided this upcoming year, I will still send my child, I'll make it work. But what am I giving up to do that? It's going to mean for my family less enrichment activities, like sports, arts, and less ability to contribute to the economy. It might mean me trying to work more hours, which would mean time away from my kids. And what about those people that just can't, simply can't afford it? It's unfair, it's a clear path to creating haves and haves-nots in our community, which is not somewhere I want to live. Again, I love Long Meadow, it's a wonderful community with so many things going for it, but I think we've missed the mark with the kindergarten issues. I implore the town to fund full-day kindergarten, show that you feel the education of all our children is important, that the best education for all of our children makes a difference both in their lives and where our town goes into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. You did a good job, by the way.
It's interesting, because I very much appreciate Katie's remarks. What strikes me about it is, and I know, I lived in the Midwest for a time as well, and I agree with you, I was surprised when I moved here about it, but I also, I don't know if you're familiar with Proposition Two and a Half is, and levy limits and the finance expenditures, and so the internal debate she described about what she's going to give up to make her child be able to attend full-day kindergarten after still tuition, I hope you can appreciate, that's what we're doing right now for the whole town. So there is a direct corollary between making tough choices all around, and so while I can appreciate yours and the comments from everybody who espouses the virtues of full-day kindergarten and agree with them, there's still, like, again, that first pie is fixed. And so if we shift the money, the 300, it's not even shifting expense, again, if we reduce the expenditure, we're now faced with very unfavorable cuts of, we'll call it enrichment activities for the whole town. So I appreciate your remarks very much, and so I'm trying to connect where we're sitting, is very similar to where you're sitting. Thank you.
I was really excited to see...
Yeah, wait, yeah, Alex, Alex, go ahead, and then Marie, and then Mark.
So I think the remarks that we just heard kind of raised an issue that I've talked about a little bit, but, you know, one of the things that town manager was asking is, well, what are the, who really can't afford it? You know, who's really having trouble? And I have a child in kindergarten this year, so this isn't going to affect me, never will, it's not going to affect my pocket, but nobody ever asked me how much money I had, could I afford it. So we don't have that data about financial resources. The other thing that, the data that I don't know about, is whether this two-tiered system has a disparate impact on racial minorities. I just don't know that. I think that's something that we ought to look at, because it, you know, I mean, first of all, we don't want to have something that has a disparate impact on racial minorities, and it could subject us to lawsuits, because things that you know have a racial impact on racial minorities can subject us to lawsuits. So, you know, I mean, to me, like, we're kind of operating with that lack of information, but the fact that we're even asking the question, these issues are coming up, to me, sort of speaks to the value of full-day kindergarten.
Thank you, Marie.
I just want to say, it was exciting to see two new residents coming in tonight and speak and join the community conversation, and there's some wonderful committees, audit, finance, conservation, please look on, we'd love to have you...
School committee?
School committee. Oh, there we go.
That's why I was inspired.
There you go. So thank, that was it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's, we've heard everybody refer, we have the highest tax rate in the Commonwealth, and we do. Tax rate is the quotient of, or the result of a numerator and a denominator, and our problem happens to be the denominator, which is what our tax values are. But for equal-valued properties, or excuse me, for equal, you know, properties, we are 41st in the Commonwealth in tax rate. So that means if people took the houses here in Long Meadow and moved them around, your tax rate would drop in 40 other communities for the same house. So it's not that we're overtaxing our residents, we're in a situation in western Mass where housing values are low. I think some of us like that when we bought the house, we don't like it so much when we sell the house, and when we, but put your house in picket community, Newton, Wellesley, Weston, Marlborough, and your taxes are going to be a lot higher than they are here. Just point that out, has nothing to do with our budget discussion.
Nothing to do, you're right. Go ahead, Ms.
Hi, my name is Amy Hilbrook Davis. My husband, Randy, and I moved this summer in July from Kansas City area, Overland Park, Kansas. So I was inspired to come speak, just to introduce myself, but to also share that we very, we have seven children. And so we were very specific in choosing a community that celebrated family. As I sit here, as I've watched and observed, I have an elementary, a middle, and a high, Blueberry, El Williams, and Long Meadow, and I have a freshman at Harvard, I have a sophomore at Notre Dame, and I have a junior at Yale, and one who just graduated from Harvard. We're all about education. And with, and I say that to suggest, and what has thrown me this year is that on paper, man, Long Meadow looks good. You invest in, these kids are excited about education, families are all about activities, and then when you start to open up the doors, and you hear discourse and discussion about, "My son had to spend $350 to try out for basketball?" Really? Talk about racially marginalizing or celebrating people, families that have lots of kids too, three, four, five, doesn't matter, 40 bucks is 40 bucks. $350 is an outrage to do a little something after school, to stay off the streets, to invest in your body and your mind and your spirit. So it baffled me, and yet I realize this is a small town, and things are done differently here. In Kansas, we've had full-day, paid-for kindergarten for at least eight years, at least. It's not even up for discussion. That this was a discussion, that there wasn't one, my friend and my youngest new friend, classmate's mother, Kim King, was sharing, has been sharing with me over this last year how this town works, and I know every town has a different, there are different, there are competing priorities. I again, sort of reiterate, I chose this town because of the safety, the sidewalks was a huge draw to my family, the schools, and the support to families. And I think you all need to, regardless of age, regardless of where you are in your family spectrum, you need to appreciate this side of the mark, the new people that came in that didn't buy their house for $150,000 or $300,000, more in the five, six, seven, eights. And we're looking at these bills, and we're seeing these decisions being made on the future generation of leaders, and we're questioning whether we are going to invest in elementary, whether they're going to continue to invest in middle school. This lovely middle school principal is here to tell you, if you don't start making these choices that encourage strength in education, you're going to see it in middle, you're going to see it in high. We know that, and I know you have budgets, my family has a budget, we all have budgets, and you're here to make our lives and raising our families in Long Meadow successful. I hold you to that mark, as do all these people in this room. And so to sort of, I took, I took issue with the way you replied to that nice mom, who said, "Golly dang it, I'm doing my best to make ends meet." That you sort of threw this big budget at her as she's saying, "Here, here's who I am, here's what I'm trying to talk to you about. I thought your presentation was fabulous, I thought you were very articulate, and you guys all know what you're talking about." But to hear us, to hear us say, "Help us," there's a cry out there in this community, I see it. This community's kind of on fire with regards to education, whether it's elementary, middle, and high. And I see it because I'm from an outsider and have sort of a fresh perspective. But I appreciate that you said no, and that you didn't appreciate this budget and vote for it. And I commend you, because I imagine, in seeing the facial expressions of, with your comments, you weren't highly applauded for that. And that takes courage. So, thank you.
Okay, let me add one thing, clarification. There was three proposals on the table last night. One was $150,000, $125,000, and a $75,000. Mr. Grant's was a $75,000, and we settled at the $125,000, and he didn't vote for it. So there was a price of 75, I guess he would have voted for it, but he wouldn't vote for it at the $125,000, so he's, we're not saints or we're not devils. We had a complex saying to arrange, but I mean, if you'd watched all of our meetings, you'd have a better flair for what takes place up here in the debates. We appreciate you coming to town. You got good sidewalks in your community?
No.
I was going to say, we don't get many good comments, the sidewalks, that is infrastructure. That's the capital program that we just cut $150,000 out of.
Richard, I apologize if I wasn't, if my intent with my remarks wasn't clear, and I think one of the things that, like I said, is somewhat unique to Massachusetts, is Proposition Two and a Half, which is the state, I think it's a constitutional amendment, certainly a law, that dictates how much municipalities can tax, can levy property taxes. So I think, and if, you didn't say this, but this is what I thought I was referring, I think if it was an issue where the board could raise taxes more to accommodate full-day kindergarten, and they were just deciding they didn't want to do it, I think it would be, you know, even more angering for the, even for the people who, you know, have lived here a long time and understand the restraints. That's not the issue, and I don't know if you thought it was or not, but the issue's not, they just don't want to raise the taxes to pay for it, it is that the town cannot raise the taxes over a certain level.
Right.
And so that's why the kind of push-pull of expenses in the town is such a stressful thing for both the select board and the school committee, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I appreciate that, and that's something we've learned, that's very different, but we as parents have a minimum level of expectation for our children with regards to education. Golly, full-day kindergarten, I didn't realize it was even a question mark.
And we could actually increase the taxes above that 2.5, and that was what I floated, and the board turned it down, and that would have funded...
But we can't, but the residents can.
The residents can, we can propose, we are the only group that can propose a tax increase above the 2.5, it's called an override. And that was my proposal, because I said, "We have so many things we're cutting into that we shouldn't be cutting into, why don't we put it all in one bowl and go to the voters?" You know, like, $500,000, $600,000, and that would have funded full-day kindergarten.
Yeah, and that's another key point, that, like I said, if you're relatively new to town, I don't know if you've attended a town meeting, the select board only makes a recommendation to town meeting, and town meeting is everybody here who goes on the first Tuesday in May to the high school gym, and votes on the budget and can amend it on the floor, and so the town's people ultimately have the final say. And so that's where, this is just a recommendation to town meeting, and so it's not, ultimately the final say isn't even the five people here, it's town meeting that has the final say. I will tell you, the kindergarten issue's been voted on at the previous two town meetings, but we're still working hard to, I think, accommodate the school's wishes in that regard.
Thank you. It's a learning curve for us, as we're learning everything, so I appreciate that. But thank you for allowing me to chat.
Thank you, thank you for coming up and sharing. Anyone else?
Well, Ernie's coming up, come on, Ernie, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. It seems that, I've now been on the select board a few years and gone through the budget process a few times, and I think it's worth noting to the people here that each budget year has been a tough budget year. This year is not particularly more difficult from my perspective than prior years. And each year, we have something, some category, that allows us some flexibility in the budget that we've never had before. And we go back a few years ago, it was a state allowance that let us negotiate with our, all of our employees to change the method of, or the type of healthcare benefits that our employees got. People need to know that, you know, everybody said, "Negotiate less with your employees." We can't negotiate benefits with our employees, that's a state-level-based program. We can't do that. When the state gave us permission to do it, we went and did it pretty aggressively. That year saved us enough money to allow us to do what we wanted to do within the 2.5% limit. There is an action by the select board that I was part of three years ago, that said, "We are going to decide that as we go forward with collective bargaining, we're going to set what we need to, so in fiscal year 2016, our general government unions," and there are five of them, there's police, police supervisors, fire department, clerical, and DPW, "would have a zero increase in their wages that year." Yes, we paid a little bit more in 2014 and 15, but we did it intentionally so that when 2016 came along, we had those zeros in the plan. That saved us last year. You look at this year, believe it or not, we've been able to, as a town, lock in very favorable fuel costs, whether it's fuel oil for heating our buildings, gasoline for our fleets, our police use a lot of gas, our fire department, our DPW. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars of reductions in those line items, or the fuel line items, that have helped us get where we are. Unfortunately, it hasn't helped us get far enough. So, you know, there is a lot of work and planning that goes on, sometimes you're better lucky than good, and the fuel is clearly this year a case of being better lucky than good, although I will say that our general government, our purchasing department, our town manager was smart, we took advantage of it, and we've issued, we've executed some long-term contracts to try to lock those fuel rates in, so as fuel rates start going up, you can be comfortable that the town of Long Meadow is still locked in at some pretty low fuel rates. So every year, we do something a little different, we try to take advantage of it, but we still are constrained by, there's a maximum we can raise taxes, and we have a lot of needs and requests, so I just wanted to make sure people understood that there are things that have been done over the last couple of years. Sorry, Ernie, go ahead.
Thank you. Paul, am I right here, did I hear, did I hear Mark write that statewide, that the percentage of, for example, the percentage of premium payment by the employee is the same?
No.
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 No, not the, not the percentage.
The benefit levels are the same? Would, would, speak to that issue, would you?
Fine. First of all, the town has committed to pay minimally 50% of employee-retiree health insurance. The town does pay the minimum for retirees, it pays the minimum for those employees who have indemnity plans, it does pay a higher percentage for those families or employees, retirees who have HMO plans. With regard to benefits, the town is not allowed to change benefit levels without going through a collective bargaining process.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, that's one of the questions. What percentage, active employees, what percentage of the total premium do they pay?
Active employees, again, if they have the indemnity plan, it's 50%. If they have an HMO plan, we'll pay about 60% of a family HMO plan, and about 66% of an individual HMO plan.
So my, I've come to suggest a simple solution, not easy, but simple. $125,000 is being back and forth, right? So when negotiating salaries this year, whatever the amount was going to be, back it off by that tiny percentage that allows for it to be $125,000 less. Let's ask our employees to give up that much, so that there can be kindergarten, free kindergarten.
Some of those contracts are already completed.
Well, that's not, my idea isn't going to be very good, then. But something like that, it doesn't take much, wages, compensation is so high, that if you can just cut things back a little bit, it makes a huge difference.
The department head's at the back chucking about that one. No, I appreciate your saying, and it is a constant pressure that we work on every day in trying to find ways to fight attrition and everything else, so your comments will not be ridiculous.
Hi.
Are you going to give us some substantially new information?
I have a question.
Okay.
A question to clarify, because I have your 15-page line by...
Name it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim King, 15 Pinewood Drive, I am on school committee, but I'm not here as school committee, I'm here as a town resident, because I do pay taxes as well. So when I look at this budget, you have mentioned the crossing guard thing, so I want to just clarify, because I was at the meeting last night when you added $5,500 back into that budget, for the crossing guard, hopefully over at... -for the crossing guard, hopefully, over at Long Meadow and Converse. I'm sure that that is appreciated, as I stand on the corner of Burbank and Converse every morning and watch the traffic on that road. On the crossing guard line item, and now, this is from March eighth, so it might be updated since then, but you have a reduction in twenty-four thousand, one hundred, and so, we're gonna add five thousand into that, so how many crossing guards?
No. It disappeared.
I think I know this.
Let Paul do it.
If he knows.
Let John Stankins.
They set you up for that?
So, I, this is from, sorry.
Because I was asking this very question.
Okay, see, so I haven't had time to go back and look at all, because I know that you guys have been meeting almost every single night for the last two weeks, so I thank you.
But that's all right, if you don't want me to-
And I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Alex, you did the investigation, go ahead.
But, so, it's a twenty-four thousand, so let's say, plus five thousand, so it's a nineteen thousand dollar reduction in that line, and what is it for?
Okay, so, this is what I was asking, okay. So, included in this, and Chief, if I'm wrong, please correct me.
I figured while you're here, we could get this out in the open.
So, the, and I spoke to Paul about this as well, so, they're having this traffic sergeant, they're changing an officer into a sergeant. That traffic sergeant's duties obviously has to do with traffic, you know, because you wouldn't call it anything else, right? So, and there's a crossing guard supervisor right now-
I've met her.
And that sergeant would take over some of the duties. So, you see a difference in, so there's an increase in superior officers, but a decrease in regular officers because of this change, and therefore, a decrease in the crossing guard line item. But, he did the math for me, and it's, you know, so that, the way we have it, it gets us to twenty-two crossing guards for the year, plus pool crossing guards.
Okay.
So, and the reduction that would remain, would have some, a crossing guard handle two points that are fairly close together, that are fairly lightly traveled. And I've walked that myself, and I think it could cause a little inconvenience, but I think it's doable. So, that's, that was my judgment on it.
No, I know the crossing guards, at least the three in my route, and I've been chatting with them, and I know they've been counting their kids and-
Yes, yes.
And trying to steer kids away from an uncross, a crosswalk that doesn't have a crossing guard, to the one with the crossing guard.
Right, right.
And very quickly, when you look at the comparison, if you'd actually look at the FY-15 expended amount-
Right.
The decrease doesn't seem as great. I mean, there was a large increase request from a hundred and thirty-seven to a hundred and forty-five, you know, that's almost a six percent increase. So, again, I think that might have been a little bit on the high side. So, again, a little better comparison might be to start with the FY-15 number, and move it over, you know, extrapolate it over to seventeen.
But I know, like, the schools also provided an additional crossing, six thousand for the extra crossing guard this past year?
I know, it was discussed.
Oh, well, last year, in FY-16?
No, for FY-16, for the year we're in now. It's been discussed, but I don't know if that's actually happened.
Can you receive?
Not, yeah, there's not been transferred that yet.
Okay. Just, okay, and then there's an increase in the overtime, the special overtime there of twenty thousand dollars?
Last year, last year, Kim, in the current year's budget, we want to challenge, we, and I was still kind of the leader of that pack, we want to challenge the public-
Not kind of.
I was the leader of the pack, thank you. Again, two corrections.
Yeah.
But we challenged the public safety directors, fire and safety, to restrict overtime, but rather than eliminate it, we took their twenty thousand dollars from police and fire, and we moved it into the reserve fund. If you need more overtime, go to the reserve fund. They've gone to the reserve fund, they need overtime, so this year, we're putting it back in. So, as Paul said, instead of looking at sixteen versus seventeen, if you look back at fifteen versus seventeen, you'll see, it's exactly the same. So, it was just, we took it out one year, and now, we put it back.
Yep, okay. I won't go through all of my little questions there, but I do have kind of an overall statement. First, I know it was a little bit earlier in the meeting, but thank you, Marie, for mentioning that we don't want to be a town versus school issue here, because I feel like sometimes it can get that way, and we are an entire town. I know that when I look at the school budget as a school committee member, I am always thinking about what Paul is saying about the levy limit and everything, and I'm a taxpayer as well, so I have to think about that from that seat as well. So, I appreciate you mentioning that earlier. What I see and I'm hearing is that the town needs a long-term plan for increasing revenue. I know it's been discussed, I don't know where we are with that. I know the schools are probably the largest square footage of space in the town, just by me driving around looking at it, I feel like that's what it would be, if I'm wrong. I think we should initiate a town-wide facility team to look at the facilities together, if there's cost savings that can be made, we clearly need to find them, because we are reaching our limit. We've talked, Marie Doyle has talked about a possible savings in combining the middle schools. There is land that would be available if we got rid of one of the middle schools and combined them. There is a watershed tower, twenty acres, that was mentioned earlier, that is, I don't know, we have some sort of joint, something with that, I don't know exactly-
Not very joint.
But something-
The school committee has the controlling-
Well, they have to declare surplus, which it is under our current charge.
Right, and so, but there's no plan for that, and I know that I'm on the school committee, and maybe there's something I can do to initiate something like that, but I just, I feel like we've got this twenty acres at the watershed, we've got the possibility of some space at one of the middle schools, I have no idea the acreage, but that is possible space for increased revenue in this town, that we clearly need. So, I don't know what needs to be done, but I guess it's just kind of an overall statement that I personally feel. I know Eric Lester came and spoke in front of the school committee on Monday, I know you probably haven't gotten a chance to look at his forty-minute clip, but two things he mentioned that were very important to me. He mentioned that in the next ten years, there are going to be forty thousand jobs in Massachusetts, STEM jobs in Massachusetts, that are gonna be vacant. So, the students that are in school right now, we need to be making sure they're learning what they need to get into those jobs. Those jobs average about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which is a pretty good salary, if you're out in western Massachusetts, not eastern. But, so, I feel like we need to be, honestly, we need to be stepping up our game, at least on the elementary side, because I know that we just implemented a new math program, which we severely needed, but we don't have a science program that is really unified and maybe up to date. I know we're looking at it, but it's also gonna cost about a hundred thousand dollars to implement a new science program. The other thing that he mentioned was there were some steps that we could take as a community to help with this levy limit issue, and so, I asked him personally if there was something we could do, and he was gonna email me some information, and I feel like if we have some sort, and not that we want to have another task force in this group, in this town, but I feel like we need to have some sort of group that is driving the state to look at our town specifically for this issue, because it's a huge issue, and I don't know, two, three, four years, it's gonna happen, and it's gonna affect us, we're, these teacher cuts that we're talking about right now, it'll probably have to happen. And the cuts in staffing on the police and fire, it might have to happen, and we have no control. So, I feel like we need to do something drastic, and we need to do it now. And so, I'm happy to help with that, because I might have a little bit extra time next year. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kim. By the way, Kim was current school board member, she decided not to run for reelection, I saw she's gonna have some free time next year, so. Anyone else?
Richard, can I just say to Kim, I just got this in Las Vegas, and there's local officials looking for help with the caps, so it's not just in Massachusetts. Many states have this problem.
Marie brought that for me.
Yeah. Anyone else? I don't know, Russ, she's coming up twice now, mate. Your return trip, you know, is crunched down on time now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, this time, I'm gonna do exactly-
Unless you wanna stay with us, while we do the capital program tonight.
So, I'm not gonna make an argument for or against this, but I want to speak as just a parent, citizen, instead of a committee member. So, the way I'm looking at this is, we really have two options. On the school committee side, there's gonna have to be a vote on what to do with middle school. If everybody wants kindergarten, there's two ways to do it, at the moment. One is to cut middle school, that team, and the other is to go, you know, you don't do the seven thousand towards OPEB, the fifty-eight for capital, the twenty-nine thousand for the levy limit.
That doesn't sound like a parent talking to me.
Which is-
And it's the same person who's giving me-
It's a educated parent-
Okay.
...who does this for a living. And the twenty thousand for free cash. So, actually, the two and a half, we're not at that number, I mean, the twenty-nine thousand would get us right there. So, that totals a hundred and fourteen, what we need is one-twenty-five. So, as a parent and a citizen, what I would ask you to do is consider using the hundred and fourteen. It's, because in my mind, looking at both sides of it, it's either that or the middle school team. And the middle school team, if we cut it, it's not gonna come back, most likely, unless things really improve, which I don't think they will. So, I don't, and I do have a kindergarten child that'll be, well, in kindergarten in two years, so my wife would kill me for this, but if we actually do it and we can go through this, you know, I'll donate the twenty-seven fifty, because it's not about me, it's about doing the right thing, and I really do believe that kindergarten is important to everybody in this town, because ultimately, education's important. It's why all of us live here, really. I mean, if you move to this town and pay the taxes you do, and you never cared about the schools, you know, it's a strange decision to make, because you really do pay a lot more to live here. And I think this is important, and I know OPEB's important, and if you say to us next year, we need to pay more for OPEB, we need to pay more for capital, all those things, I'm perfectly fine with that. But in this one particular year, I think we need to deal with this issue, and I'm hoping, I'm not speaking for the committee, because they could say something completely different than me, and I know the politics of this, and ultimately, the vote may be something different. This is really a plea as a citizen of the town. My vote as a committee member, maybe it'll be different, I don't know. But as a parent and a citizen, I really implore you to think about making that change to your budget.
Thanks, Russ. I'd just like to respond to, we've got still a couple of members, at least, to the school committee here, three members of the school committee here, and I've tried to make sure that this isn't the general government versus the school committee, it's not. You know, as I said earlier, and I truly believe if it was, we wouldn't be, have spent the time we spent to get as close as we have. You know, the general government and the overall budget you see here tonight is our fourth iteration. All I've seen is the first iteration from the school committee. And I'm just asking, from the Select Board's point of view, can you go back and do anything? Because all we've had is, that's it, we did it once, we can't, we can't find another dime in our budget. Well, you know, when we were presented in February twenty-ninth from the town manager, it was essentially, this is pre-tight budget, we don't think there's another dime in here. And oh, by the way, we've already cut short of all your policies. We cut short of your OPEB policy, cut short of your capital policy, cut short of your tax policy. And we sat down and spent, I don't even know how many hours, but it's gotta be twenty hours or more, over many, many, many nights, pushing the town manager, ourselves, pushing our finance director to make a change, make another change, make another change. And we've come a long way, and I guess my request, and I say this with all respect for everybody who spoke here tonight, is, it's not just the Select Board who's got the responsibility for balancing the budget of the town. We have a large responsibility, we may even have the predominant responsibility for presenting a balanced budget, but we don't have the entire responsibility. And in fact, if you look at the budget, we only have thirty-five percent of the budget that we can really tweak. Now, we can go back to the school committee and say, no, you're gonna get half of what you wanted, or something like that. That's not practical, and we would not do that. My kids went to the school system, they benefit from the school system, I live in the town, hopefully, if I ever decide I want to sell my house, I want to make sure somebody wants to buy my house, because we've got a great school system. So, you know, we're not looking to come here and cut the proposal from the school system. What we're trying to do is work our best to get this to work. What we're asking for is meet us somewhere along the route. Notice I didn't say meet us halfway, because we're over halfway, because it was already a hundred, it started out at three hundred and eight thousand dollars, and we're over halfway. I'm not even saying meet us halfway, I'm saying meet us along the route. Challenge yourselves, challenge the administration, challenge everybody to see what they can do within a budget that is thirty-five million dollars to find a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was the challenge that we like to leave with the school committee. I know it's not pleasant, but I heard person after person come here this evening saying, dear Select Board, please balance the budget, please fully fund kindergarten. What we didn't hear here is the seniors who are saying, why'd you raise my taxes two and a half percent? You said you were only gonna raise it two and a quarter percent this year, I can barely afford to stay in this town. There are people like that in this town, trust me, there are people. Amy Sada is sitting in the back row, the director of our adult department, she can tell you the people who, we committing more money this year through community preservation for elderly people in town, for their home repair funds, so that they can fix their homes. They can't even afford to fix their crumbling home, because their taxes are what they are. So, my plea back to everybody is meet us along the route. You know, we have worked hard, we have worked earnestly, we have done, you know, we fought amongst ourselves, we've done it all in public, and yet, we've come a long, long way toward trying to accommodate this request for free full-day kindergarten. To come to the Select Board and say, it's now our obligation to fully fund it, I think is not looking to the entire town. As the town manager indicated, ultimately, we're just the executive branch of the government. The legislative branch, the people are gonna decide, is our town meeting, and that's where this is gonna go. I hope that this doesn't become a challenge on town meeting floor, only because of the number of hours we spent on this, and I think you've seen some of it tonight. It's complicated, there's a lot of detail. You know, setting a town budget in a two-hour town meeting, you know, I think risks missing things. So, my request is, meet us along the way, let's get to a place where we can agree to, and let's go forward. My first step, hold on, my first comment was, we've got a sixty-five million dollar budget, and we're a hundred and twenty thousand dollars off? Folks, that's a rounding error. It's a rounding error. Why are we, I mean, you know, we've gotten to the point where we said, you know, and everybody needs to understand this, our budget, we've been talking about is the expense side, nobody's talked about the revenue side. The revenue side is a bunch of assumptions. We know what our taxes can be at maximum, we're assuming what the state's gonna give us for a couple of different things, we're assuming what our revenue's gonna be for motor vehicle excise tax and for other, you know, we don't know what those revenues are actually gonna be. So, we're off by a rounding error here, folks, if you will. Let's come together, meet us along the road. That's my final request.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be very brief, I promise.
Okay. Did you already speak, yeah, you already spoke, didn't you, Jess?
No, I just asked a question.
Okay, but you gave your name and address for the revenue-
I did, Jess Hutchins, one-twenty.
Well, you did that before.
I did.
Okay.
This is not in response to anything, Mark, you were just saying specifically. I just was thinking, as you were talking, that where we've sort of identified one of the elephants on the table as being sometimes the school board versus the Select Board, and dissipating that myth, and really coming together, I think, is a wonderful thing to recognize, and an important piece of the process. And I really do applaud the Select Board and the school committee, because I think that you're, both boards have been doing an excellent job of communicating and working together from where I sit. But one of the small little things that I wanted to address is, sometimes I think that we talk a lot about seniors who struggle financially, and one of the things that we don't talk about are parents with school-aged children who are struggling as well. There are more double-income families in this town than there ever were before, there's been an increase over the past ten years, and that's why we don't have parents who are coming forward, who are able to give their time to volunteer for the boards, and it's really sad. But the reason that I'm stating this is, I don't want to lose sight of how much young families are struggling with the economy today as well, and I think that, you know, my kids have gone through kindergarten, we paid out the nose for kindergarten, we're past that, but I think it's a really important sort of part of the puzzle, as you're putting all of this together. So, thank you for allowing me to speak to you late in the evening.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you, Jess.
nose for kindergarten, we're past that. But I think it's a really important sort of part of the puzzle as you're putting all of this together. So thank you for allowing me to speak to you late in the evening.
Thank you, Jess. Anyone else?
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. I actually had not planned on speaking, but I want to speak to a couple of things that were talked about. One of them was when Mr. Crane asked about half-day kindergarten and who can't afford it and who's in it. And I just wanted to say, across the state, what has been shown by the data is that both in the state and in Long Meadow, the half-day kindergarten programs are disproportionately filled with students classified by the Department of Education as high-needs. These are the very students who could benefit the most from a full day of kindergarten, and they're being left in the half-day. They're starting off their education behind their peers. So that's the half-day and what it looks like. Another thing I wanted to make a comment on is when you speak about full-day kindergarten as being hit by kindergarten. Now, first, full-day kindergarten has been phased in across the state for the past 15 years. This is my third budget season of talking about this with the school board and the select board. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. In addition, I will say, on the school side, they have been reducing the tuition and absorbing that in their budget and the revenue lost. So they have been, in a sense, planning for this over the years. So when you talk about meeting halfway, and I understand the constraints on both sides, I really do, but I just wanted to point that out, that they have been reducing their revenue and absorbing that over the years. And meanwhile, over this time period, if it wasn't me talking that made the point about the direction of the state, you can see now that over 90% of the kindergarten students in Massachusetts attended a full day of kindergarten last year, and 85% of them did not pay. So I think it's obvious, the standard in kindergarten education now includes a full day, you know, and that, those are standards set by the state. Another thing I wanted to speak about was when you spoke about class sizes and the benefits, and there is a huge amount of research on that. And it is not dependent on what level you're in. And, you know, I'd be happy to share that information with you, too. There, you know, you can speak about some differences depending on the needs of the children, but all children benefit from keeping those class sizes small. And then I had one question. When you talk about raising the, you speak about the levy limit, but then talk about the potential of a proposition 2 and 1/2, and raising the tax is over that 2 and 1/2, why would you ever propose that when you're talking about kindergarten, a $300,000 cost, you know, and using that as the reason you're going to reach that levy limit, and then suggesting reaching that levy limit faster by an override? So that was a little bit confusing.
Okay, let me explain, because I was the one that talked about it. That's not a prop 2 and 1/2, that's not a full 2 and 1/2. We were going to take 450, 500,000, whatever it was. That was also to fund back the funds that we had originally taken out of these programs to fund the original school request. Okay? And then we cut, we brought on top of that the secondary request for full-day kindergarten. So that was just that piece. It was about $439, and I think we were talking possibly $500,000 as an override to take care of this entire puzzle. But we've been hit, I guess we've been hit by a perfect storm. There's been high insurance costs this year, there's been factors come in that normally don't hit us all at once. And that's what I thought, I thought that was a simple way to do it. And I still think it was a simple way to do it, personally.
But then you are increasing the tax...
That's correct.
...rate, and you're going to get to that 25 just even faster.
Okay, but we just took $400,000 out of policy programs for the long-term health of this community. That should mean something that anybody is aware of. We're taking money that was intended to be spent on not only future benefits for our employees, but also on the infrastructure. So we're backing up. That's what bothers me. That's not a positive thing we've done this year. Funding full-day kindergarten is a great idea and a fantastic thing, but taking money where we took it to do that is a very poor decision.
And not one that I have a part of.
Right.
But what I can just speak to are the needs on the school side. And then I was just questioning, you know, when you bring up the concern about the levy limit, but then talk about raising the taxes more and reaching that faster, there seemed to be a disconnect there.
He said, "The pie's this big, and we have needs that are bigger than the pie." And what we have done, instead of taking levy limit, is we've actually robbed from the future, is what we've done. We've kicked the can down the road. It's just like when you've heard on the DPW complex, it should have been built in 1988, and here we are in 2016, still trying to construct something that should have been that because they kicked the can down the road. We're just trying to stop it, that's all.
And I could say the same thing about full-day kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
And I have, you know, year after year after year. And also, the return that you get, it's short-sighted to just think that you're funding a program but not thinking about the long-term benefits of that financially. And it is a fact that, you know, the research has shown, at minimum, for every dollar you spent on early education, you will receive $7 in return in future costs. Not only that, but you're talking about the class sizes as well, all of that. If you look long-term in the savings, you know, that's something that's important to look at rather than the here and now. And that's what I think is what may have gotten everybody in the situation that they're in.
Go ahead, Mark.
And I think, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think that this board, and I understand the school committee, we all are really pushing, we want to have all-day. We have that as a priority of this budget. The issue now is we're looking at what are we going to cut on each side to get to that goal? And that's our concern right now, and that's what we've been struggling with here, on how to make that happen.
I wish there was a magic money tree. I'd go out and grab it right now.
Paul's office.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, one of the, you know, ever since I've moved here and I've followed Long Meadow town politics ever since I got here, is people say, "It's one town. It's not town versus school." But unfortunately, every time that we make a comparison, we have a PowerPoint that says, "Well, it was this percentage for this department, it was this percentage for another," you're making that distinction. And I guess one way that I like to think about seniors is, you know, they're benefiting from our kids. I remember one time, I was at my law firm, I was starting out, we didn't know anything, we had to be trained, and some of the best partners came down to train us. And they were like, "Oh, man, I don't want to spend the time training you guys." But then he said, "You know what? I realize you guys are going to be paying my pension. See, the kids today are going to be paying our social security. We're not going to be paying our social security, the kids are." And so, and I think about my own education because I know almost every bit of education I've gotten was paid for by somebody else. That was true in public school, it's true in college, it was true, I mean, because I was on financial aid. And that's true for almost everybody. You are standing on the shoulders of somebody else, and we're just trying to, you know, be smart about it and to fund the kids that are going to help ourselves. So to me, that's really what makes it one town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll be quick.
Take your time, you don't have to be quick.
Well, I just wrote it in my phone here. Melanie Ballstein, 30 Englewood Road. And I just want to add, too, that I'm from the Midwest, just like the other two women. I'm from Ohio, and I am going to speak about funding a full-day kindergarten. But I will piggyback quickly on what both Mary and Stephanie and some of the others spoke about regarding full-day kindergarten. Beyond equality issues and fairness and discrimination, et cetera, and things that have already been discussed here tonight, has anybody been in a kindergarten classroom lately? Has anybody talked to a kindergarten teacher? Kindergarten doesn't look the same as it looked even three years ago. And that's because of two words, Common Core, the new national education standards. Does anybody have a school-aged child who's struggling through Common Core math? It's not just happening in the upper grades, it's being pushed back down into kindergarten. And things that were expected of first graders is now expected more of kindergartners. As Superintendent has said, that children who don't attend full-day kindergarten may fall behind due to the rigors of Common Core. She said at the town meeting last year, or I may be misstating where exactly she said it, but I believe that was where she said it. I did ask kindergarten teachers, and the last kindergarten teacher, I asked what's going on in kindergarten classroom, put her head down and pointed to watch and said, "Gee, would you look at the time? I got to go." And I think that speaks to volumes that there's stuff going on, and a lot of them are not talking about it. Asked if things were developmentally appropriate for the kids and got the same response. And at least 500 early education experts, including pediatricians, special ed, psychologists, have come together in a joint statement and said that Cases III standards are inappropriate, meaning things have been pushed back, and they're expecting kids to tie their shoes before they walk. So just another aspect of why kindergarten is important now. Things have all changed. Ask any teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't been in kindergarten, but Stephen and I were in second grade reading books on it, and it's a scary experience going to a second grade. And I say that with due respect to the second graders.
It's childcare. I've heard people think that, oh, if you want your child to be fully paid for childcare. I think a lot of the town question is childcare, and it's just not...
And I know the hours of the basic words, that's not the view of this group or me. So I want to assure people of that.
Yeah. Now, that is one issue I can guarantee you has never been uttered in this chamber. There's been a lot of other things uttered.
Do you have a chamber now?
Yeah. We've got a lot of other things uttered, but not that. So any other comments, folks, or in reference, or any questions for any member up here? I thank you. We had quite a forum tonight. Last year, we had zero. This year, we had a robust discussion, and it was beneficial, I think, not only for this board, but for the people in this room and for the people at home. It was rewarding to see brand-new families come in and speak to us, that's a different view. That's a pretty nice thing to experience. We're going to go ahead and shut down the forum at this point, and the select board is then going to progressively go right into a regular meeting because we're going to talk about the capital improvement program this year.
Hour and 20 minutes.
Hour and 20 minutes, because at 11 o'clock, the lights go out.
I do excuse myself for the capital question, but I believe in the steady hands of the department heads.
Okay. And folks, I appreciate everybody coming in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And for you, for those of you at home...
It's not a closed session.
No, it's a open session. You're welcome to stay.
For those of you at home, we're going to go right into a capital discussion.
Richard, can I just...
Absolutely. Janet Robinson, current square board chair.
Yeah, I'm Janet Robinson, 57, Canterbury Lane, Chair of the School Committee. And as you, I've been at your meetings the past few nights, and I just wanted to update you all that I have called a school committee meeting for Monday evening at 7:00 PM to discuss the formalized offer from the select board. My goal is that by the end of that meeting, I can come into this room and join you to let you know what the school committee has decided upon. So out of fairness and out of our collaboration, you know, I felt it fair to share that with you.
We're not going to use the white and black smoke?
I could, if you'd like. I don't know that the fire chief would appreciate us using smoke in the school buildings.
Thank you, thank you, Janet.
But just wanted to let you know so that I know you're deliberating and voting on the budget Monday. I'm hoping that we can sneak in before you do.
Thank you for getting that meeting set up with your folks.
Tom's not available, so I don't know that we... Tom's not available, so we won't be able to have it. We're still needed. Okay, I don't really know yet.
Okay. Okay, let's see, we're going to go right into the capital. Mario, why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Mario, why don't you come on up and take a seat?
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
We're not going to get it all in an hour and a half.
Yeah, we are. It's going to be done.
Start reading now, read fast.
It's going to be done. Mr. Presturgeek, I think there is a magic amount of money that we must reduce our budget to balance at this point in the capital?
Well, the capital request came in at $1,697,000. In the current budget, as you went through the operating portion of it, I believe you had made some cutbacks to the capital budget, and my number right now that you're going to raise and appropriate is 1.475.
Right. I'm okay with the 1,475, but somehow I came up with $1,528,390 as the recommendations of the capital planning committee.
Well, this is what, when we were discussing this, I wanted somebody to add up the numbers from the capital planning committee because this, we thought we were adding up their recommendations, and it came to 1.6 in sum. And the actual spreadsheet that...
Dr. Metz.
Dr. Metz sent is 1.528, which is what he said he was recommending.
Right.
So I don't know where the difference is.
But we're going down to 1,475.
Well, yeah, either way, we've got to cut down 1,475.
But we've got to know where we're starting from, you know?
Right. Do we start with his recommendations or ours? And Richard, I, because I took, I had a chance to kind of try to take a look at Dr. Metz's list. And so, Paul, maybe we can just verify what I've got versus what you've got and see where we have. So their recommendations were project development, $35,000...
Project development, $20,000.
Okay, 25,000, right. And project reserve, $10,000. Okay? Right, I'm sorry. For a total of development contingency of $35,000, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what. Technology is $30,000.
Right.
The center school, excuse me, the high school...
I don't even know if you want to consider that one because it's $5,000 right now, and that doesn't meet the limit.
That's below the capital threshold.
Right. They need it, they can get a reserve fund, I would imagine.
Well, right. Well, I was just going to add it to the list, but it's not capital, you're right.
I'm not sure if I'm looking at the same thing you are. Did I see what your sheet is?
This is the one that Richard handed out. That's Dr. Metz's.
This one, okay.
Yeah, this was from Dr. Metz.
Okay.
Okay. Because the one that Richard handed out, it had, right, the high school scoreboard backstop was $5,000, and then this...
So you're saying we're cutting out the 5,000?
So we're not cutting... You can throw it in there now if you want, but...
We're not cutting anything so far. That was it for anything beside DPW equipment, roads, sidewalks.
I thought he had to recommend the Esplanade storage and air quality, $84,000.
Which, where's that, Paul?
No, that's on his list of not recommended. That's on page three. Lower-ranked projects ranked by priority, but it said...
No, you're right. You're right, this was on the sheet we were going over. And we went through that line by line.
So where are you hung up there, Mark?
Dr. Metz gave us three pages.
Right.
Right. The third page says lower-ranked projects ranked by priority.
Yeah, Dr. Metz, did you run the figures to see if Dr. Metz came up with the 1.528?
I did, and that's what I thought I came up with.
Okay. So you can trust that?
Well, not necessarily.
Paul, what's the bottom figure? What do we got to get?
$1,475.
$1,475. There's also over $30,000 in the capital stabilization fund now. I would assume you want to add that to it. So you're looking at 1,505 plus three zeros.
Yes.
1,505?
Yep.
Wait a minute, I thought the capital stabilization fund was sort of this kind of fund to address overruns?
No, no, no. Projects that underrun, Alex, at the end of the year, the money's put back in.
Okay.
Okay? So we have 30,000 in there...
That's accumulated.
That's accumulated from a variety of things that are left.
From last year.
If we defer that, that, that picks up 94,000 right there.
But, I mean, that, I'm still struggling over this esplanade storage and air quality thing.
Why are you struggling over that? It's not recommended.
Because it was on...
But this is, this is the latest. So, don't struggle with the other sheet. Struggle only with the current sheet.
Well, so, the 1,475, does that include the 32,180?
That includes nothing. That's what our budget is. What we do is we start with zero, and we can spend up to 1,475, plus 30,000. We can spend up to 1,505.
Yeah, 1,505.
That was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. You just yelled at me and then answered the question.
And if we don't, and if you dump off the truck on Mario, the one that you said you'd last lay for a year, that's 94,000, so it's already down below, so we could add something back in.
Except that Dr. Metz's recommendations don't include the fire department, the fire truck, you know, annual investment. That's also on his page three, which a couple of us thought we should continue to do.
Well, there was thought about not putting it in, too.
Yeah, that's the right, you either put it in or not put it in, right?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, the fact is, there was, there was a thought it was needed, because you're gonna bond it anyway.
Fine. So, so should we just start at the, at the beginning and just say, do we agree with the recommendations, the highest priority recommendations of the capital planning committee, which is, the, the first one was $35,000?
We know we're gonna agree. That's done. We've agreed on that five times over.
Well, here, can, how about this, does anybody have any issues with these recommendations? Maybe that would be a... Because I don't.
I don't either.
To me, and I had focused on, on the 10-wheel hook lift as well, Richard.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, that's...
If Mario's saying he can leave it for a year, I mean, that's, that's...
We don't have it now, so, you know, it'd be nice to have, certainly, but...
Right, right.
Is any of the other stuff, the accessories for that, that rack, rack body M3, or any of that other stuff go with that hook lift?
No.
Okay.
I think that price that I gave you was inclusive of all the extra attachments.
Okay, so, if you did take that, and you took the 94 back away from there, then we can add something off this list over here. We can go down to the highest priority item that we can get back in there.
Hold on, can I, before you do that, Richard, can we just, just go through the recommended DPW list to make sure that we're all talking about the same five things? Fine, there's, it's a working foreman's utility body, four-by-four with cloud, 21113.
Right, Neil, this is coming out of, out of your enterprise funds.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's all right with that.
I, I'm all right with everything on here.
And everything on here equals 1,434,390?
When you take off the...
The 94.
Right.
And so, that, that, those numbers have been added up correctly, so...
I, I don't have that sheet, so I'm...
Oh, you don't have, no.
So, we are, but we're just doing something by ourselves.
I'm just answering questions on my request, though. Yeah, absolutely.
Paul, let me read through this with you.
I've got an extra one here.
Hold on, we, we're gonna give him some pages.
The reason, the reason Mark wants me to is his hand...
If you have an extra one, Paul, I'll follow the conversation. I think ultimately, I'm just gonna try to answer.
Yeah. I think, I think we've already got the puzzle taken care of. You can take that and throw it into the asphalt fund, and we can get out of here. Or throw it into the, or throw it into the...
Sidewalk, whatever you guys pick.
The high school project, the high school project.
Well, I just have a question before you make a decision, but go ahead.
We're not making decisions.
Okay.
No, we, we've agreed on the first $35,000, and I assume we've agreed on $30,000 for the school communications...
Yep.
...system, right? And unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the Russell scoreboard, $5,000 falls below the, the definition of capital. It's less than $10,000. So, that one's...
Well, I, I would suggest including that. I mean, it's just a policy. I mean, because the thing is, I mean, this is, it's a partial solution, and, and you're putting, you're gonna have to have them jump through a bunch of hoops to get the money. Why can't we just do the $5,000?
Can we put it at the bottom, because we're gonna find out that we, the next project is, is 12,000, and we've got 12, and we've got 6,000 left, and then we can add in 5,000?
No, we're, we're good here.
We will.
We're good, because we're, if you take...
Yeah, Mark's got, Mark has to go down to his process, though.
But, but, well, we're talking macro now. If you take their recommendations, you back out the 10-wheel hook, you're actually a little below what we've allocated for capital. As, as, as Richard says, you can make the pavement preservation whatever number you want, or sidewalks whatever you want.
Yeah, whatever you want.
And then bring it up to that number, and we're done.
Okay. What's the number, though? Because I wanna, is it 72,7, 72,790?
What, where are you getting that from, Marie?
I took the bottom number, I subtracted 94,000, and then the amount that we're supposed to, allotted is 1,507,180.
Right. I took my figure and came up to 1,505,000,000.
Why don't we just start and ask?
We are. You're kidding. We're just talking. Will you continue your writing?
We just, I just wanna know what the difference is.
Well, I, I don't know what the, what's...
Start with 1,505,000,000. Right.
Oh, okay. So, the, and then...
And start there.
Start there.
Okay, so, utility H3 truck, I didn't hear anybody say no. The next one is the utility work machine, $60,000, which was recommended.
Right.
Hearing nothing, we're gonna go down to a rack body M3 for $54,000. Hearing nobody say no, we're going down...
Whatever Mario wants.
Well, no.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I'm thinking it's assumption that the, that this capital planning committee went through this.
There was no opposition, no opposition.
Right, right, okay. So, the next one is the, is the asphalt hotbox recliner for 38,900.
Right.
Right? And, and then we've got a facilities director vehicle, M2, 28,362.
And the only note that Dr. Metz had was evaluate replacement with surplus police cruiser, and we moved away from that policy two or three years ago, of taking the old cruisers and putting them down there because of the energy efficiency, all that.
We're green community, we can do it.
Right, we're green community, and we said we were gonna stop that policy. Now, it is true, they could use them, because they don't put that many miles on them, but we said we were going the other way.
Okay. So, that's a facility director, M2. Is that energy efficient?
It's an old cruiser. Uh, no, now it is a Ford 500, so it's better than the cruisers. I, I think it also came from, actually, I don't know where it came from.
No Prius?
We do not have a Prius.
It's not one of the new ones, though, is it, Mario?
No, no, no.
It's one of the old Crown Vics.
It was recycled, and I don't know if it, no, it's not a Crown Vic. It's a Ford 500. I, I don't know if it came from police or another town department.
Well, I was just gonna subtract the ones from the 1,528,390s.
Okay, so, just, just go ahead and purchase the vehicle.
I don't trust that.
So, that, that vehicle's in, Mark.
Fine, fine. So...
And the 94 is out.
And the 94 is out.
Right.
So, without, then, then I think we, we look at, it, it becomes asphalt, sidewalks...
Well, you gonna go down to the rest of it?
Well, we're not gonna look at these three.
There is no rest of it. Yeah, right, we're gonna, you're gonna agree with the 550 in the pavement preservation list? And the 4, and the 440 in the sidewalks?
Sure.
Okay. And guard rail, guard rail replacement at 50.
Okay.
Elmwood drain, we, you're here in case any, now, there was some questions on that drain. Do you have any questions?
Right, that's, that's, that's the sewer project.
This is a drainage project.
Oh, I'm sorry, drainage project. Um, oh...
Let me get to it.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, this is, this isn't so much a technical question, it's sort of a...
Oh, all right.
A relative, relative question. I mean, because the town manager was talking about how, you know, we've got tons of these things, or, or potentially tons of these things. I mean, is this like, is, I'm, I'm just trying to get the magnitude of this problem. I mean, are there tons of these things? Is this the worst? I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I don't have an answer on if this is the worst.
Okay.
This was part of the five-year that just moved up one more year.
Okay, all right.
So, that's more or less how it's...
So, it was on, it was on the list, and...
Right.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, the Elmwood drain, there's no, no opposition on that? So, what's your math showing you? Did you get it yet?
Yeah. The total, there's 1,429,390.
And see, this is where I would wanna keep...
That's not what I got.
Well, no, because he's backing out 5,000.
Oh, okay.
See, and this is where I would like to keep the 5,000 in.
Yeah. I got 1,434,390. Is that what you got, Alex?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, that's the $5,000 question.
If we keep the 5,000 in. And then, what I don't get is if we take the 1,507,180, and minus the 1,434,390, what is that? Because my number's different from Richard's.
I got the number of the 1,505 from this room.
Right, right.
That was, that was what the rest of it was in the capital stabilization.
171,000, it's not, it's 71,110.
71,110.
And I think we ought to put that through to the ambulance fund, very honestly, not the ambulance fund, the fire truck annual contribution. I think skipping that is a mistake, but then again, I have a bias.
I have a question. I'm sorry I wasn't here on Monday. What is the espalade storage and air quality?
Okay, so, underneath the air, the library, the cafeteria where you walk out of the high school...
Yeah.
Okay, there's actually a storage area there.
Right.
Okay, it was not intended for anything, and when it was built, it was just kind of an empty area. And then, the DPW said, great, we can use it for storage. And they put in the door, and they started storing things there, and lo and behold, they found mold, and everything else was growing there, because it wasn't meant to be closed up, and there was water kind of dripping in, and it came up a lot in the school committee meetings, and they did all kinds of things to try to remediate it, an area that wasn't intended to be stored for storage. The point is that the DPW's not in there now, but the athletic department said it would be great if we could store equipment there, like uniforms. But if you're gonna store stuff there, you've gotta condition the, and I'm not gonna say air-condition, but you gotta do something to get the moisture out, get, put a little heat in it.
But right now, it's not being used.
No, but it, but it's essentially pretty good storage we could get, you know, for, for $142,000, but it's $142,000.
Oh, it says 84.
No, I'm sorry, okay.
$84,000.
So, so, you know, I've got, I found it on my notes, so, Marie, I don't think you were here for this, but...
No, I missed Monday.
I, I put poor Dr. Metz through the trouble of going through each one of them.
Uh-huh.
And, and what I had in my notes was what Mark just said, but he also, but also that it was a lower priority as CPC said, but it was highly ranked by the schools. So, this, and I think that may change a little bit, because that, that was contingent, I think, on not putting that storage locker out there.
Right. I think there was a...
Okay, I mean, maybe you can fill us in, right?
Well, the only little bit I would add to that is there's a deteriorating storage, yeah, looks like the back of a tractor trailer.
Right, right.
And I think it, it's leaking, and they need to replace it. And I think they're looking for alternatives, buy a shed to take the place of, of the storage bin, or maybe spend the money and use this space. That was, and I don't know if, you know, they pushed to, in one direction versus, you know, towards the shed versus this.
Even was talking to him, I'm not quite sure where they came, but that's what it was, is it either, because if they're not gonna use that storage area down, you don't need to repair it. I mean, it's...
Well, I, and, and was this one of the ones where the capital planning committee was thinking, well, maybe there's a cheaper way to do it? I mean, is this a situation, or, or do you think that's really what it's gonna be?
Um, I don't, I, I did attend a couple, and I don't remember having a question like that. Is there a better way to, to use that space?
No, no, I mean, like, a better way, I mean...
A cheaper way to air-condition it, or make it usable?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
I don't recall a conversation like that either. I think it was more, what do you use it for now? What can it be used for if this is funded type of thing?
I mean, it does seem like a shame not to be using that space, you know? I mean, and, and that would be, because I think they had put some athletic equipment and it gone bad.
And I think we also had maybe snow blowers, lawn mowers, something like that, that we were using on site, that also rotted, rusted.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
There's just a lot of moisture in there.
But it's 84,000, we, we're only at 71. Is there such thing as a partial project?
No.
No, I don't think so. We do a piece of that.
Yeah, so, we don't have the money unless we're cutting something else.
Well, we could cut pavement by 13. I mean, because that's a...
Well, we could also increase pavement by these...
No, I understand, so, but, I mean, like, you could make the numbers work either way. I mean, that's the point.
It's Alex first rich, huh?
What's that?
Alex first rich, I'm worried that, I don't know whether we're gonna cut pavement or put a storage area.
Well, I don't think we're gonna battle that hard on this one.
No, we're not.
We'll save it for something else.
Okay. Do you want me to really cause trouble?
What's that? Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want me to really cause trouble?
Go ahead.
Okay. What about if we take, um, take out that 5,000, and take 70, take of that 71 that's left, and put 50 in the replacement engine, and then back the rest of that off for negotiations? In other words, taking 25, so another, 50,000 of the 71 that's left, put that towards the replacement of the engine, which leaves us then with 21,110, and 5, so that's 26,110. And we take...
What engine replacement? I'd miss that.
Fire engine.
Fire engine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Replacement that you were recommending. And then, we back 20,000 out of the capital to put back towards negotiations that we're going to have on Monday.
I don't agree.
No. I don't agree on that. There's another point. Boy, it just went right out of my head. The truck, we need to be putting away $100,000 a year to be set to purchase those two vehicles because we ran the math the other night. And $100,000 will keep us on track for the next two procurements.
Yeah. I think you said you want to plan on that.
Right.
I'd rather take the $20,500 that we didn't move from free cash because we made it 79.5 instead of $100,000, and take that 29.5 and move that 20...excuse me. Take that $20,500 additional money and move it into our capital.
Well, I know that's what you were talking about doing, but...
And that's what we were talking about the other night, is when we didn't spend the whole...because I wrote down, when we didn't spend the whole $100,000, we said, "Let's put that in reserve. We might want to move it into capital."
And I think we're going to have some more negotiations on Monday. We should keep prepared.
Well, we can adjust the budget here.
Very honestly, I'm not prepared to negotiate it.
But I'm not prepared to settle a negotiating figure right now because I think that's very unwise because we might be in stiff opposition. We have taken massive cuts, Marie.
Yeah.
And there is, there has to be a limit.
Okay. We can, as you said, we could just...I mean, that's...we could decide that on Monday and throw it in the...put everything in the engine for now.
Well, Alex, he wanted to pick up that $5,000 net.
Fine. So, pick up the 5,000. You know, if...I'm...
I see. I'm going to...I think we're going to end up backing out. So, I would just say, "Get rid of the 5,000. Put it all in the engine. And then, Monday, if we end up negotiating further, we pull it out of the engine."
But the Russell Field backstop is used by the school athletic departments as much as any...they benefit from that as much as anybody else.
So, what does that have to do with that?
So, I'm saying, leave that in capital, even though I can't believe I'm saying this because it's $5,000, and it ought to not be capital. I mean, by rule, it should not be capital.
It should be in there.
So, you're saying-
I'm not going to go to the reserve for it. But, you know, I think that we have had a at least 10-year policy of putting away money for a fire department, fire truck, every year. We've done it faithfully for 10 years, and to stop doing that is just going to burn us very shortly.
Okay. So, we're leaving the 5 there. So, that means we're left with 71,100, and we throw that towards replacement of engine two. How's that?
Or just into the fund. It doesn't go on any...
Well, whatever engine the chief decides on.
It's a set-aside for the fire fund.
You're correct. Right. It goes into the fire-
I never really am.
It just goes into that account.
Into the fire truck account that Paul had, right?
Yeah. Because if we keep robbing these things...now, I can see right now the handwriting on the wall, somebody's going to want to reach back in and take that engine money now. I mean, that's the practice that we're starting to do.
Yeah, probably a month later.
But let's not talk override, though. But let's talk about raiding every account that was set up for the benefit of this doggone community. Now, you've got to start listening to what we're saying, folks. Now, I'm not evil because I said override. It's a very sound-based decision because everything we're talking about now, we're playing games.
And that's all budgeting ever is.
No. I disagree. It's not all it is to me, but it may be to other people.
Well, I mean, it's always balancing, moving, shuffling. But so, is everyone happy with leaving the 5,000, taking the leftover 71,100 and putting it towards engine two?
No. I'm not.
Okay. What do you want?
We're underfunding the engines.
So, where are you going to cut? I'm not going to...I'm not ready to cut pavement and sidewalks and guardrails. So, I'm not sure unless you're going to take away his snow and ice truck license.
No, and I'm not going to do that. I'd either take the $20,000 from capital, or, yeah, I'd take $5,000 out of pavement. I think the difference between 550,000 and 545,000 isn't going to make or break up.
It does.
I hope that falls right in front of your-
And I'm sure it will because it's scheduled to be done.
That one little patch.
Yeah. No, that patch is-
The point, Richard, is that, you know, we're already getting $450,000 in Chapter 7...in Chapter 90 money that...so, it's, you know, we're talking about if we get 450, and I don't know if that's been kind of close to where we've been.
Ballpark.
Ballpark. And we add in 550, that's a million bucks.
Right. And you need to spend 5 million a year.
Yeah. No, I'm not ready to cut.
So, that's just what we're saying.
I'm not going to cut any of the pavement, sidewalk, or guardrails.
Oh.
Yeah. So, to put into a fund where we're going to end up bonding the truck anyways.
I don't know, Alex. Where are you?
Well, I'm still on this...
That would still mean it doesn't happen.
I know.
I'm still on this esplanade storage...I mean, to me, it just...it seems like such a shame. We've got this...we build this building, we put this big storage area, and it's unusable.
It wasn't built for storage.
It's supposed to be open.
Yeah.
I know, but we did build it.
No, it was an afterthought.
I know. I know it was an afterthought, but we have it, and it's a waste.
But what would they have cut for the 84? Are you serious?
So, what I'm saying is, use the 71 and then subtract 13 from pavement.
Ooh. So, that means we're not doing anything for the truck. But we're probably going to bond the truck.
Right. That's my point. This is the discussion we're having.
The whole purpose of the fund is so that we didn't have to bond the truck.
No, but you're going to have to bond it one way or the other.
Because when you bond the trucks, what you end up doing is paying the cost of the bond. That was the whole idea.
I wonder, why wasn't this picked up on a CP, on the community preservation?
Which one?
That net.
I don't know if it was a funding problem that they didn't have enough.
No, they've got plenty of money.
My request wasn't just the net. There was a couple scoreboards that were being replaced, and one mobile one.
Was that submitted to...
Yeah. And I think what you see here is just them funding the net and not the scoreboards.
Right. Right. That's what they said.
Let me find the math.
They have 78 on there. 78,000. They requested 82.
82. Right. So...
I mean, here's the thing about the 5,000. This is something that costs a small amount of money, and it affects a lot of people. I mean, you've got all these people trying to play baseball. I mean, if the net's not working, it could mess up the whole program. I mean, let's just keep the 5,000.
But Alex, it's not capital.
I understand.
But you already said you were going to keep it in there. Now, you're...just leave it in there. The issue is, are we going to put the truck fund, or are you going to do the Esbleid storage? So, if you go with the Esbleid storage, Alex, you're not going to want to play with that number later. You're going to want to...you're going to want to...you're going to want to not only go to the 71, you're going to want to go to the 84, which means you're going to be cutting pavement. And if that's the way you want to go, that's fine. But I'm...
The problem with the pavement, sidewalk, and guardrail numbers to some extent is that it gives our DPW a maximum number that they then go out to bid for. The bids aren't going to come out to be a million dollars. I guarantee that. And because you don't have more, they're going to come out less than a million dollars.
We usually cut one.
Maybe they'll be $10 less than a million dollars, or maybe they'll be $10,000 less than a million dollars.
You're going to guarantee that.
I guarantee that they're less than a million dollars. They, you know, what are they going to do? I want you to pave to their...oh, you can go another $10,000, pave another four inches. I mean, they're going to pave a road if they're not paving a road, right?
Right.
And until we get, you know, it's a shame to do this, find out that the DPW comes back and says, "We've done all of our roads. The number is $9,982." Or 9,000...yeah. 9,982,000.
I know what you mean.
982,000. And we had $18,000 that we didn't spend because there was no natural place to spend $18,000.
Do you really believe that they couldn't spend $19,000 on asphalt in this town?
Not on the paving.
Mari, you promised you will try to spend every single penny that's going to be in.
19,000. Believe me, it's not hard to do.
But this paid to the contracts.
I know. But I mean, $19,000, I mean, that does driveways and everything else. Even down at the police station, you need a driveway, put it in there. I mean, that's chunks of money. You know, to get down that small, you can use it.
So, Alex, do you understand my concern about the Esbleid?
Yeah. Right. I mean, it's sort of an immovable chunk.
Yes.
And it also said that they wanted to recommend Town Engineer evaluate quote on that one, too. It sounded like they weren't totally convinced it was right to go.
Yeah. So, I say, "Let's put it in the engine fund. Keep the scoreboard. Put it in the engine fund." And what does the whistle from the quarter of the room say?
That message is coming in.
He's just...scoreboards aren't needed.
Okay.
That's the communication coming in.
But is Stephen watching?
Apparently.
Of course.
Oh, my God. That must be the most frustrating thing.
He'd recommend dropping the ventilation project, and that's their quality.
So, am I rushing you guys if I put a motion on the floor to...
Go ahead.
What's your motion?
The motion is to keep everything on except for the 10-wheel lift hook and take the additional funds, which my understanding is 71,110, and put it towards the replacement of engine two.
No. Just to put it into the fire engine replacement fund.
Fire engine replacement fund.
Right.
I move.
Okay. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Say, see no discussion? All in favor? Look at there.
It's a miracle. The lights haven't gone out.
I know that was hard, Mark.
Yeah. It's killing me. It is. I think it's really a shame to do that.
I bet you were in favor of the fire truck.
But we're underfunding it, Alex.
Yes, we are.
We're underfunding it. We're going to find ourselves, you know, having to bond a fire truck.
But we're going to do that anyway.
And we could...
I mean, we know.
We could look at fall free cash if that comes through, putting in more money there, too.
Mark, do you want to 21.5 from free cash to go with that? I'd love to.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Only if you can slip five of that into his accounts so he can buy the net.
Buy a net.
But the net was already included in what you did.
Did you leave the net in?
Yes.
Okay. Then you don't get the five.
Okay. So, if we put the...
Sure. Sure. I'd love to.
Put the 21 in free cash there, too. What's the...how much is that? What's the number?
$20,500.
$20,500.
No.
That's going...because I tell you, it's Lucy.
Well, it's going into the fire account, and if it needs, they can reach right back in and grab it.
No, it's not. The free cash is actually going to go to the schools, and we're going to appropriate more additional fund, an additional $20,500 into the capital fund.
I'm sorry. Have you lost me?
I don't know. The motion made yesterday. Right. But this isn't a motion, but the point is for...pardon this, simplicity's sake, I think we need to have a motion on town meeting that takes $100,000 from free cash and appropriates it to the, you know, and moves it into the general revenue, period. I mean, that's what we're going to do.
Right.
That's not what we voted on.
We voted 79.5.
79.5.
And I'm saying-
But that was not for the schools.
None of it.
No.
Right. None of it was from the schools.
Right.
It was just to put it into general revenue, and we voted money into general...there is no earmarked funds.
Correct.
You know, it's all general revenue, right, Paul? So, if we vote to move $100,000 from free cash, because that's the amount of money we were going to reduce the schools by, and we increase our capital allocation by 20,500...
Was it 21 or 20?
I think it was 20.
20,500?
Yeah. It was 79.5.
Five, right.
Well, the difference would be 20,500.
Okay.
That gives us 91,610 to spend on...to put into the fire truck reserve fund.
All right. Is that a motion to do that? Or we have to do that on Monday?
We don't have to do it on Monday.
We have to do it on Monday.
Okay.
The only little difference I have is if it's 71...you're saying 71,110? I thought it was 71,610.
It is 71,610.
No, I have it 71,110.
But you're wrong.
You realize that's the third error tonight, Mark.
I agree with Mark. I didn't say...I said 610. I didn't say 71.
No, you said 71.
610.
I wrote it damn wrong.
71,610.
71,610. You're right.
Okay.
So, it's 92,110, and I would end up with a fire.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And how much is in the fire now?
I don't think it's anything. We drained it last...
No, I'm saying...I'm talking about, what was the number you were just saying? 91?
92.
92,110.
It's getting close to $100,000.
110.
That's close enough.
Okay. Was that a motion?
Yeah. I'm going to make that in terms of a motion.
Now, the second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Paul, are you trying to catch these motions? I think I have them already. You're going to take $100,000, put it into the operating fund. And we're going to increase it. For the operating budget, and then you're going to increase the raise and appropriate in the capital. Right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I thought this motion had to do with 20,500.
We're going to...we're going to take up...we're going to add a warrant article that moves $100,000 from free cash to the operating budget because $100,000 is the amount of money next year we will get back.
Okay. I get that part.
We're going to then-
Does that supersede what we did last night?
Yes.
About the 79?
Yes. And what we're going to do is increase our budget line item for capital expenditures by $20,500. So, instead of 1,475, we're going to have 1,495,500 will be the capital line item. Correct, Paul?
Right. Plus the 30.
Plus the 30 that's already in the fund would give us $1,525,500 to expend, which we've just done. And that's the motion.
But the effect of this is you want to put a little bit more in the truck fund, right?
The result...by increasing the amount we allocate to our capital line item, it allows us to put still less than what we should.
Right. I understand. But we've had a vote to what, 71,000? That's where we stand now.
Right. And he's talking about putting additional in.
Okay.
So, are we ready, Paul?
Yeah. No further discussion? We got...I seconded, right?
Mm-hmm. I seconded. It was under discussion. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. That issue's done.
We're done?
That issue's done.
Oh, is there one?
I don't think we're all through the capital.
We spent everything.
I believe you're all through the capital. Well, I mean, unless you still want to talk about the three water and sewer projects that we're going to be bonded.
Does anyone want to talk about the water and sewer projects that's going to be bonded? We have the Director of Public Works here.
No.
I hear no comments. Mr. Director, I appreciate you coming in and sitting and listening tonight.
Thank you.
And the fire captain who's in here?
Just your presence.
Hey, I got it written off. No. Fire chief. Fire chief.
I have to say that.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes. Sorry for keeping you guys.
Okay. Any other business, guys? Okay. We've got...okay. How about the meeting on Friday? Can we feel comfortable and cancel on it?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll take care of that in the morning. We'll cancel that meeting. And then, I guess, what is it? Monday? It's our next Monday on the 21st, is it? That's our next actual meeting, and we'll vote in the budget and close the warrant and all that stuff? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, so, we are going to take a couple days off. It looks like we've resolved most of the financial issues. I hope you enjoyed the forum tonight and this brief discussion on our capital program for our town. We'll see you on next Monday as we will-
At a regular meeting.
At a regular meeting. We'll vote in the budget and close the warrant at that time. Have a nice weekend, ladies.
Paul, will you...